One hour workshop on the budget. We'll just go right into a presentation from Michelle.
Good evening. We're going to go over our budget presentation this evening. Also, I have other administrators here with me this evening. They're going to talk about staffing at their various buildings and I will turn the presentation over to them at certain points. I apologize, I thought I had run back to the office and grabbed my PowerPoint presentation and when I got back and looked, I did not. So, I am using this off the website and I'll just have to kind of scroll through it, so. So, back in January, on the 24th, the board approved the preliminary budget. You can see from this slide that when we approved that preliminary budget, we had a shortfall of 1.5 million where our expenditures exceeded our revenues. Since that time, the district has worked to help decrease that amount. The preliminary budget included a tax increase of .5731 mils for a total mileage rate of 23.49 and that was equal to the Act One index of 2.5 percent. The preliminary budget also authorized administrators to apply for Act One exceptions with PDE. We were not allowed to include those in the preliminary budget because we needed to show that we had a use for the exceptions, a need. Since that time, we've worked on changes. You can see in February, we had a few small changes and that brought us down to 1.4 million dollar deficit. As we moved into March, we had some additional changes with the most significant being the approval of the Act One exceptions which allowed us to incorporate additional revenue into our budget, our proposed final.
Can I just, for the clarification on that? The approval of the Act One exceptions was the, from the courts, that we're, that those would be available to us?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yes, we are not required to use those dollars. We can use some or all. We received two exceptions, one for special education and one for retirement, which I have incorporated both of those exceptions into this proposed final. And then as we moved into April, we had some additional changes, including the most, the largest one, which was the use of the retirement escrow fund. And we had been planning to use that all along, we just had not incorporated that in. So you can see, based on the changes that we've made over the last three months, we now have what we call a balanced budget with the exception of the fact that there is no capital, capital improvements in this proposed final budget. So I think one of committees had asked that we do a review of the positions that we had reduced last year and I'm just going to go over them slightly and the building principals, when they talk about the changes to their building, will address, address those areas. At Ithan Elementary, there was a reduction of .5 special education teacher. At the middle school, largely because of the schedule, and I'll let Mrs. Purnell address that when she comes forward, three teachers in grade six, a 1.0 in special education, .4 language, .2 facts, but we actually added back in .1 of that position. It was a .3 reduction and then gifted a .2. At the high school, there was a .7 art, a 1.0 facts, a .4 chemistry, a 1.0 English and a .2 language. So, in your packets, you should have a summary sheet that shows the staffing of the district. It's a one-page document and that shows by building the various positions and contracted positions that we have. Should be right behind your PowerPoint, I believe. Yes?
I'm going to turn it over to Tony Rabarchek. Dr. Rabarchek is going to go over the elementary enrollment and registration process.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to need to go back and forth between a couple, two slides here. This slide and then, as you go forward in your packet, you're going to see this colorful enrollment piece. So, I'm going to explain that as we move forward. So, if you want to turn to that, the enrollment spreadsheet, that would probably be more helpful as I explain this. So, what you're seeing in front of you on that enrollment form is that our current number of sections for the elementary, where it's the fourth column, that shows four, either four, three, six, or five. That is our current number of sections. And then, when you go forward, the column right after the yellow, after the yellow column, it shows the next projected set of number of sections of classrooms for the next year. Again, those are, now I'm going to have to flip back and forth. So those numbers that are to the right of the yellow column do not account for the continued incoming new kindergarten students or new students into the district. So between now and August 1st, when we're moving forward, those sections may go up or may reduce based on the number of move-outs we have also. But currently, kindergarten registration began the first week in February, so the numbers that you see up there in the yellow column, starting with the top one, is Ithan Elementary. It has 66 potential enrollment with packets that are out to parents. Radnor is the next one down, under, right underneath the 420, that's 69 kindergarten students. And then, right under the 554, that is Wayne Elementary, that's 62 kindergarten enrollments.
Excuse me, Tony, do you want me to ask questions? Do you want me to wait till the end or as you go along? How would you like to do this?
I think we're going to wait till the end, if I'm correct. So, if you can just jot your questions down and then I can answer those. So the registration information can either be downloaded from the website, the district website, or it can be picked up in the school's office at this point still. And then, the registration of any new students does occur throughout the entire school year. The reason we say August 1st registration deadline is for our staffing purposes, to know where we stand and how many teachers we're going to need at that time to obviously fill those, the sections that are available in that column to the right after the, of the yellow numbers. So what you see, just heading back to the, the actual spreadsheet up here, you have the grades, you have the actual enrollments, those are as of April 20th, and the number of classes that are for each of those sections. So, for example, Ithan Kindergarten has 74 students currently. We offer four sections of that class, those classes right now. The next column would just be the breakdown of the separate classes, so two classes of 19 and two classes of 18. Then again, going into the yellow column, that is our potential enrollment with packets out for next year. So with kindergarten, as I said, February 1st, we open that up. We get people who either download the packet or register. We have the two days in March during parent conferences where we allow parents to come in and enroll their students for kindergarten or any other grade, but generally, it's kindergarten that comes in on that, those two days. So we have a total at this point, as of April 20th, of 66 students between, who are registered and accounting for packets that are still out with parents that they may not have registered yet. And then to the right of that, you see, we base it on the number of, how many sections we're going to have for each of those numbers, based on the 21 and 25 per class, and that's the, the recommendation that we have had, starting back 1990, 91. And then, the next column just shows the estimated, the projected number of students for, that will be in each class, based on the number of sections. And then that column to the right, the seats available, is important to us because what it shows is the number of seats that are open in a section before we look to move forward to adding an additional section. So if you look, it's kind of hard to see on here, but I'm going to show you. So if you look right here, where the 72 is, this is Ithan 5th grade. Currently, there are 72 students projected to be in 5th grade at Ithan, given us three sections, meaning there'll be 24 in each class. So if we get three more students, we will be fine, if we get no more than three students, we'll be fine in staying within the recommended guidelines. If we get four, that takes us over the 25 per class and may result in additional section, depending on when that time comes in. And again, so you, what we pay attention to on these numbers are the lower, the smaller numbers, the three, the three here, the one, this is Wayne Elementary, this is the kindergarten. Kindergarten at Wayne has generally been four or five sections, so it's no surprise that we will more than likely jump to four sections there. But we're going to have to watch, you can see down, it's kind of hard to see, I'm sorry. Down here in 5th grade at Wayne, we're at 100 students with four sections with 25 already in each section. So depending on what happens here, again, we, we watch this over this course of the summertime because we do have kids that move out and move in, so it does fluctuate and that's why, again, we're going to the August 1st cutoff date of watching to see what happens with enrollment numbers. So, at this time, I'll take any questions you may have. Lydia?
Okay, so some of them are just factual and some of them are my opinion, so.
Okay.
First, I'll start with the August 1st cutoff. It seems to me that that's way too soon to make a decision about whether we need to open sections. And I know in the past, we had elementary principals that used to watch this up until the last day that the letters went out, the last week of August, to decide if they were going to add a section or not. So, my opinion is that that is too soon. Knowing this community, I think you could get some pretty big changes in August that would really change what we're trying to do here. And unpredictable, it could be three 4th graders move in to one, you know, elementary area and there goes your numbers.
And that's why we do want to watch those numbers that are the smaller numbers up there in the, in the red. One of the, the problems we've been having over the last couple of years, though, because as a result of Act 126 and the clearances and the amount of time you have to take to get the clearances back, we've been getting people and then losing people right after because they've either gone to another district already. So that's why it seems as though the August 1st would be more beneficial to us, that we could actually get someone and get those clearances through.
Well, it might be, it might be cleaner for the administrators, but I don't think it's going to save our purpose of trying to keep these classes, you know, class sizes down. So, so my preference would be that you let that go much later, at least in the elementary.
Can I just ask a clarification? We're not saying that as of August 1st, whatever it is, that's what it is. We're just saying, August 1st is a trigger. No, that's what I'm getting clarity.
For our staffing purpose.
August 1st is a trigger for us to start to contemplate. If one looks like it's getting close, incredibly close, or is over, we will start the staffing activity. But the day before school, if something unexpectedly happens, we're going to adjust for it. Is that correct?
I would, I'm not sure we, the day before school starts, but, but later in the month, yes.
Leading up to the...
So if that 5th grade at, at Wayne Elementary, we get an influx of four students all of a sudden, that is something we are going to have to sit down and consider and take a look at.
So you're not saying you're cutting it off at August 1st, you're saying, August 1st is a trigger to get started looking at bringing more people?
Correct.
But Dr. Rabarchek, just to frame this, though, somebody comes in, they need a place in one of our classrooms, they will find a place in one of those classrooms irrespective of when they move into the district or, or on your list. It's our obligation to educate that student, right?
Correct.
So, I think, I think that probably answers it, then.
Well, no, of course they'll be welcomed in our school. The issue is, Dave, that we want to make sure the class sizes stay under the guidelines.
Understood, but Lydia, when you set a, when you set a date to get the information, it's to help our administrators plan for the year, but the reality is, and to your point, as those numbers change throughout August, which they always do, we will find room and accommodate those students to the best of our ability.
Correct.
And if it requires adding a new teacher or a new section, we will do that. That's our obligation.
Absolutely, yes.
So, my next question, right along with that, it looks to me like you've already got five potential sections, or five potential classes that are going to need to split and add another student. So you've got three of them with only three spaces left, you've got one that has no spaces left, and you've got one that has only one space left. So do we have five watch positions in this budget?
Right now, we do not. That, I, am I correct, I'm saying, we do not? But one of the things about that, Ms. Solomon, is the three in 5th grade at Ithan and the three in 4th grade at Radnor Elementary, those are ones that, I mean, we will definitely watch, but have a tendency, we're going to lose a couple students still and add to that number, that seats will be available. And generally, we do not get the influx of a 4th grader, a 5th grader. The, the one year that we did was when the Archdiocese did close down some of the parochial schools. That was when, or the, when they could start combining schools, we did get an influx there, but in the history over time, doesn't show that we've had that much of an influx in the higher grades. Excuse me.
So, how many watch positions do we have, then?
Excuse me, I'm going to guide you over to the column to the left. We currently have 81 staff members. If you look at the 22 plus the 29 plus the 30...
Oh, right here, 22, 29, and 30.
So there's 81 staff members currently. So if we look at the numbers that Dr. Rabarchek has up there, it's 76, to, to your point, Lydia, if you add five classrooms as you're looking, we're still at the same 81 staff.
We're still at it, correct.
So wait, say that again, you actually have four positions?
So currently, because these numbers are of, as of April 30th, when you look at the actual enrollments over here, we have 22 teachers, teaching positions at Ithan, 29 at Radnor, and 30 at Wayne. Currently, based on this enrollment of what we have, is 22, 28, and 26.
34, 5.
So we're well below, so there is room for that growth.
Got you, okay, that's very reassuring. My next question, I don't know if you're the correct person to answer this, but it seems to me, just looking at this chart, that the Radnor Elementary School kindergarten classes, pretty much this entire year, have been over our class size guidelines.
Correct, so those occurred as the year went on, that students were added based on registrations. So, they did grow.
So I'm really, really disappointed to see that. Would we not consider adding another teacher mid-year, then? Were we that close at the start of the year and they just kept coming, or why were we not prepared to make sure that didn't happen? Because it looks like we're at least three students over where we would have added another section.
Right, I know these came later in the year, but I, I couldn't tell you exactly when they came in, but disrupting a class, obviously, there is research that shows when you're obviously breaking up a class.
Yeah, no, that would not be ideal.
There's more harm to that for students in regard to their social emotional than there is in keeping them together, so.
All right, so, yes, but so, then it looks like at least for kindergarten and maybe 1st grade, since there tends to be more influx in those grades, we probably shouldn't cut those two grades very close. In other words, if we're close to being full at the start of the year, we probably should go ahead and add another section so that we don't have that happen again.
And that's why we will mon...
Because it looks like we did get kindergartners throughout the year.
Right, and we will monitor these, these numbers, obviously, very closely as we go forward.
So, Dr. Rabarchek, thank you, appreciate it. The, the question I have has to do with kindergarten, I'm sure, is the toughest one to predict. I mean, you have the packets, but you don't know how many more are coming. And I would gather that 1st grade can be tricky as well because we still don't sometimes know when kids are coming in from a different kindergarten, although you would think with full-day kindergarten, that happens less. Is that happening less?
That, that is happening less.
Okay, so that's swing...
I'm not going to say drastically less, but less.
Sure, okay. So then, the question really becomes, in some of those out years, 4th and 5th grade, and even in the middle school, where, so for instance, this year, you're, you have 74 students in 4th grade at Ithan, and that is next year's 5th grade class, you're already predicting the number to be down to 72. What causes you to do that? You actually, in the case of those changes, you actually know students are leaving?
So the three elementary principals do send home a notice to parents that...
Okay.
It's the, are you coming back form.
Oh, great, okay.
At conference, right before conference time. And then at conference, if they don't have them back, they reiterate it with the parent when they come in for their parent-teacher conference.
Okay.
To determine who is coming back. Even if it's a question mark, we leave them in. It's only the ones that are definitively leaving that we take out of the count.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Lydia, could I just point you to one thing and make sure we're on the same page? So I, I had a similar concern about rest for kindergarten this year. So next year, they're contemplating adding that extra section. So they'll, they'll address that, right? So I think that's, if we take this year's numbers, you guys are working to address areas where you found concern, and that's a prime example of one of them.
Correct, so as you see kindergarten, the 1st grade goes up to five sections the following year, for next year's school year.
I don't see that on rest.
Kindergarten's not a 5th section, but they did add it for 1st grade.
For, when they go to 1st grade.
When they move out of kindergarten.
Correct.
Current kindergarten is at four sections, but when you look down to the right of the 96, because it's, we're taking the 87, moving it into 1st grade, as you can see, there's been a number of registrations or packets out already for 1st grade that has made that number go to 96. They're, we're counting for five 1st grades.
You added the extra, and then to your point, Lydia, for next year kindergarten at that, at that level, they've got four sections contemplated with only 17 averaging there, so.
Correct, and we have 15 spots available still.
Right, yeah.
I have a question, Dr. Rabarchek. On kindergarten, with these packets that are out, or all of them, I guess, with the packets that are out, what's your general experience with what comes back? High, low?
It's a good question. So one of the things that we want to take a...
Do you estimate high and get back fewer, or do you estimate low and get back more?
No, we actually, we, the number of packets out, there are some that don't come back, but I would say, on the high note, I would say at least 85 to 90 percent do come back. So there's the 5 percent that decide not to move, or they decide their child's going to be in another year of preschool, whatever may be the reason. And there are some who try to register their students not in agreement with the starting age.
Okay.
The starting date. So we find that out afterwards, that may drop that number a little bit, but generally, the majority of them do come back.
Okay, so then, my second question is, you said you can do this either by getting a paper packet from the district or downloading. Are you capturing packets from both sources?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
But, for example, I could download it twice and you'd count me twice?
You could, but we collect the survey results, so we know based on the address and the name of who's downloading more than one. And a lot of the times, even, the, the one from downloading the, off the website, it's, some people don't know their address area even, so they'll, they may put Radnor Elementary, but it's really an Ithan address. So that's where we have to make sure that we have the, the right address with the right grade level and, and their attendance, though.
Do you know how your potential enrollment with packets is tracking this year versus past years?
So right now, based on last year's form that we did just like this, it's right about on target.
Okay. I wanted to say something to, hopefully allay Lydia's concerns. I remember two years ago at Wayne Elementary, we had, I think, over 40 children register in the last two weeks before school, and I knew this from directory. And I remember, though, that the school and the administration was very on top of it, very agile in terms of those bubble classrooms and were, they were able to make adjustments and accommodations so that we, across the board, stayed under the, the caps. So I'm not so worried about that, and I know you all are aware. Some questions I have regarding, regarding the class size numbers. There was a time before you were at Wayne Elementary where if a child was not in the classroom 100 percent of the time, was pulled out for special ed, for example, the child was not counted toward the head count. So, so you could have three kids, four kids who were pulled out for special ed, and that was on top of those numbers. So my question is, are those numbers fully inclusive of regular ed and special ed kids who are assigned to a teacher?
These are of the Radnor Township School District enrolled students, yes.
Okay. Regarding the interpretation of the guideline, I think we've had a lot of discussions about this, and I think I know the answer, I just want to clarify.
I'm actually going to put that.
So, for example, looking at the K through 3, it says preferably below 20, no higher than 21. There have been years when that has been interpreted as the average should be no higher than 21. There have been years when it has said, no single classroom will be higher than 21. But looking at those numbers, I believe we are interpreting as no single classroom will be higher than that second number.
The maximum allowed, based on the recommendation.
So, I'm right, I'm reading that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
That's great news.
I just want to be sure I'm clear on that because that's not how we've done it in the past. We were saying, so that no higher than 20, so the average of 22 is our desired goal.
Is our desired goal...
And a no higher than 25?
In a class.
Is still across, so if there's four sections, you could have four sections of 25...
Correct.
Before it triggers another section added. I don't think that's what Julia just said. That's why I wanted to clarify.
No, so, so the average classroom in a grade would be 22.
That's the goal.
And no single class would be higher than 25. So you can't have...
That's not what we've done.
All 25s and have the mean still be at 22, of course.
No, the goal is average of 22. It's not promising 22.
Correct.
Our goal is to reach 22, but we can have as many as 25 in all four sections before it triggers a new section.
I get that. I just want to make sure it's not, the mean is, you know, we're, we're targeting a mean of 22 and the mean will never go higher than 25, which is how it...
Fair enough, but the way you said it, I was just, want to make sure we're really clear. We're not necessarily triggering a new section when one of the classes goes up to that, over the 20, up to that 25 number.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just currently, just by example, I'm sorry, the Wayne 5th grade currently, that shows 100 students, four sections, 25 in each section, that next, if, if there were another registration to come in at that time before August 1st, then that's when we look to add the additional section.
And my last question, where's Michelle? Michelle, in the binder, on the 5th page, it says summary of per people cost per building. And it says it was prepared in April, and it has enrollment numbers that do not match up with this. Can you explain?
The enrollment numbers that we used on the document that you have there, I do not believe that we adjusted them from the January enrollment numbers that we had. So Tony's numbers are current as of the 20th. We can go back and make that modification, though.
Okay, thank you.
Or, or we could just write the January enrollment to that second column. The math is just based on the January enrollment.
Correct.
And unless there were huge number changes, it wouldn't dramatically change the math of this because this ultimately is a cost-per-pupil calculation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right.
Thank you, Dr. Rabarchek.
I'm going to ask Esther to join us to go over the changes at the middle school level
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just going to take a few moments to highlight, talk about, you have the PowerPoint in front of you, just to talk about some of the major components that we look at for the mass, for the middle school, building our master schedule. And we highlighted the major bullets, of course, a lot more time and work goes into this. But some of the key areas, we review the criteria annually with our department chairs, then the teachers, working with our curriculum team, as well as our building administrators and our guidance department. From there, using the criteria, once that's been reviewed and we feel it's appropriate, looking towards, it allows the teachers to then, to then make their core recommendations in the math, the ELA, the science, and the social studies. The encore choices, which we know art, music, facts, and classes like that, the students, some are selected at this time of year and some are as late as June because we wait until the, as close as possible, closely as possible to the end of the second semester. So some students have not finished that yet. So some of the encore choices that the students will make, excuse me, particularly in 7th grade, that will occur around June, some of them the end of May, selecting their first, second, and third choices. Then our guidance team, building administrators, are then able, we're able to then look at the number of sections and team configurations. So even though we have a framework and a matrix that we're looking at now, based on the number of recommendations, we're then able to refine that and put it into the computer. Some of the major challenges, I highlighted three bullets, balancing the teams, making sure that we don't have classes where there may be 18 boys and one girl or things. So we do look at gender, and we do also look at students that are identified receiving services in chapters 14, 15, and 16, which would be special education, 504 services, as well as the gifted services. Sometimes with singletons, it may occur where there is one class that occurs at the same time, or maybe not, that many students have selected a particular core or elective, and so it's hard to balance it out, but the students can then choose that particular class. And then as always, we work collaboratively with Mr. Beckville at the high school and Ms. Kevigus with our shared staff, core or encore students. Ms. Kevigus, with our shared staff, core or encore students. Looking at some of the reductions that we have for next year, just want to highlight this point, for the gift that we were able to redistribute and allocate the staff appropriately. The loss, the reduction of the three sixth-grade teachers, again, we were able to manage, but we are looking at, looking at the enrollment and potentially needing the three of the teachers in 2018, so we just want to highlight that, that that may be a possibility. With our German and French, we were able to manage, and with the facts, as Ms. Deco said, that a point one was returned, which was able to manage that need, based on the student requests. The special education, we are monitoring and exploring the options. We're looking at co-taught, which used to be in our science department. We do have two new programs this year, working with the leadership of Dr. Kelly Murray. We feel like we've worked through a lot of the kinks, we're moving forward, Amplify for the Science, and the co-taught for the math, excuse me, and the Math in Focus for grades six, seven, and eight.
Did I leave out anything, Ryan? Questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. So, thank you, Mrs. Purnell, thank you. One of the things that we took a look at, that we were able to take a look at, and I, I'm gonna request this information, I had, I asked for it, but I think I wasn't clear enough, is that when we see the course list for the sixteen, seventeen year, and it talks about the average students per section, you know, it's pretty clear that there are some classes that we far exceeded the twenty-five student limit. And two of the areas that were of note to me were language, where the German and the French teacher had been, the point four language teacher had been eliminated, and correlated, the French and German classes had some pretty large sections. And then, in addition, the fax position where you had eliminated point three, but then we put back in point one, in fact, those class sizes are reasonable, so it seems like somewhere in there, you know, that minor adjustment of putting that point one teacher back, helped keep the, the average class sizes down. But my question is, in looking toward next year, where you're expected to have, you know, about twenty or so more students, based on the projection, and already seeing that we've got some average class sizes that are really, I mean, having an average class size of thirty-one students really means the class had, that we had sections with far exceeding thirty, and that is just not what we are about here in Radnor. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking, as, as you look at the staffing, you know, with the administration, to know, how are we going to not have that be the case? And anecdotal, and this was the information I, I asked for, which is, the average students per section are, in some cases, quite high, and I had highlighted them, but I actually was curious to know the number of classes that exceeded the twenty-five limit. So were there five sections of math? And I don't expect you to know that now, believe me, it was a, yeah, no, 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 no worries, but, you know.
But we know it, Ryan knows.
I'm doing the math in my head of, okay, we already had, so I don't have a student in the middle school, but I, you know, I have friends, and I don't actively solicit feedback, actually. This was the year that I've the most ever heard of, oh, these classes are so big, these classes are so big, and so I wanted to tie it to, well, what's the data? Are, is, are the classes actually big? And, you know, some of these averages would indicate that, so we have some pretty big classes at the middle school, and so I wanted to know how many, and then doing the math of, we're gonna have twenty-plus more kids next year, unless we're talking about adding in teachers, how's this gonna work that we aren't going to have as many, if not more, individual sections really exceeding our stated limit? And, and that's not for you to answer tonight, and I appreciate this information. I'm not, I'm saying to you that that's where my concern lies, and that, you know, I want to hear about how you want to address that, what we as a board need to do to support you in that, because I know that our community values that class size, and, you know, these numbers were startling.
So I want to jump right on that. I went through and did the same thing, and I am stunned to see some of the most crucial courses in the middle school. All right, so I'm looking at seventh grade language arts, there's seven sections of that, with an average of twenty-nine point twenty-nine students per section, that means we're running our core language arts classes in seventh grade with almost thirty students. And now, remember, that we used to offer two sections of language arts in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which is fundamental at that age, to get those writing skills up, which we see in the high school, the kids come in so prepared. Now we've got one section of language arts in seventh grade, instead of two for each student, and we have an average class size of almost thirty students for each language arts section. That is just not gonna produce the kind of results that I, I think Radnor has come to expect for their students. And that's not the only one, there's some other, really, eighth grade accelerated language arts, average of thirty-one students, average, so that is far above what we're trying to do. We're trying to say no higher than twenty-five? That's not even close, that's not like one kid came, I mean, that's like, almost a whole other class. Seventh grade accelerated social studies, again, average of thirty, these are core subjects. Seventh grade accelerated science is twenty-six point five average, eighth grade science, twenty-six point one. Here's another stunner, seventh grade math honors, twenty-seven point seven five, and we have four sections of that. So that's not like an oops, there's, you know, one section and we got an extra kid, that's like almost nine extra students, or ten extra students. So, and I could go on, and I will, French, seventh grade, French, eighth grade, German seventh grade, Latin seventh grade, all with averages of about, of twenty-nine, with the exception of the German, which was twenty-seven point five. And I'm not, I'm not belittling you guys, you're standing there, I am not shaming you, I am shaming this board, because we cut those positions, we said that that was gonna be okay, and the result is not okay, 'cause the result is, class size is way above what we intended as our own guidelines. So, thank you for bringing this information to us. Again, I do not blame you, you were told to do that, but this is not right. So we, I, I see that you're looking at it for next year, but if, I already see for next year, four of them, oop, okay, I'm not happy with the way this looks right now. So I'm gonna say to the board, I think we really need to look at this again, 'cause this is a direct result of cuts that we made last year, and I'm not gonna put you guys on the spot any further.
I, thank you. I have a question. I'm looking at your sixth grade projected number here of three hundred and thirty-one students, and I just did a quick math on the fifth graders that we currently have enrolled, and I got three seventeen. That seems to be the largest jump from one grade to the next. Can you give us some help on understanding that? Most of the others are, you have a few students more perhaps, but that one's really big. Yeah, we have three seventeen. I'm looking at, why am I seeing three thirty-one for-
Yeah, we're predicting three thirty-one for next year, so this year's fifth grade class totals three seventeen, to Susan's point. This is what I was asking earlier with, when I was asking at the elementary level, what are the adjustments? So somewhere in the math of eighty-six plus one sixteen plus one fifteen, which is what, three seventeen, Susan?
Yes.
They, for this year, we are pretend, we are predicting an enrollment of three thirty-one in the sixth grade next year, so that's fourteen, somewhere you're expecting fourteen more students to show up in next year's sixth grade class.
Yeah, but sixth grade is a common class for people to trade, change schools.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that is, that's the one grade where there is a significant jumps from this year to last year, or this year to next year, and I'm just wondering what your expectations are, do you have something to help us understand that? I'm trying to figure out the second number that you have. If you look, if you look, Esther, on the yellow numbers here.
Right, okay.
Okay, for sixth grade, you've got three hundred and thirty-one, but when I look at the fifth grade numbers today, you have eighty-six, plus a hundred and sixteen, plus a hundred and fifteen, that's in today's fifth grade, and that adds up to three seventeen. So I'm just wondering where we're picking up these extra students, it's a fairly significant jump.
And that's a good question, again, based in our information system, as of this week, we said three hundred and sixteen, it's a fluctuating number, so I guess the other fourteen are just, I don't know, it's through the bells, or where it's coming from?
I can respond to that, actually. There are packets out, so there are anticipated enrollments coming through to the sixth grade. It may have been, the adjustment, it was, I was sure actually nine, I'm not sure why fourteen went in there, but there are nine packets out currently for the sixth grade enrollment.
Okay, so that's a real number, it's not a-
Correct.
All right, very good, thank you.
You do raise a good point, though, that the current sixth grade, next year's seventh grade is about seventy students less than the grades above and below it, so that is an unusual number for a grade level at the middle school.
Thank you. So here's my question. So class size and the guidelines are very important to us, and we're able to honor them at the elementary level, and it seems that we're not able to do that at the middle school. If, if, if we set up our goal to do that, is it physically possible, first of all? Do we have the classroom size to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Can we see what that would look like if we did that with the numbers? Ken, is that, I don't want to waste anyone's time, but can we see what that would look like if that played out and we honored that?
Yeah, if, your question is, if we wanted to look at the class sizes at the middle school, and we wanted to try to reduce some of those class sizes to twenty, to the, you know, no higher than twenty-five, what staffing that would take? That's something we could look at, and, and, you know, obviously, we wouldn't come up with that tonight, but that's something we could look at. It would then have implications for, as we look at the budget, we do have watch positions built into the budget, the question is, how many watch positions would that absorb? So that's something we could come back and look at, though.
My other question for you, Ken, is regarding the guidelines, you had expressed surprise that these guidelines were developed in nineteen ninety and ninety-one, and I had, it didn't occur to me that they should be updated up or down, or anyway. So, before we go trying to make everything to these guidelines, should we be looking at these guidelines to see if they should be refreshed?
Yeah, my surprise was just, I would have thought I would have found that there would have been a year prior, or a year after, nineteen ninety, ninety-one, where somewhere, either administratively or a document that the board kind of reaffirmed, reaffirmed that these are our guidelines and these how we operate under. Much to your questions about the guidelines, what I have learned is that, over the years, there's been a lot of pressures and fluctuations with the guidelines, depending on, you know, possibly enrollment numbers, depending on program. We have, and I'm, I'm still learning our program, we have programs also that are co-taught at the middle school, correct?
Yes.
That, where we have two teachers in the classroom with, and that class size could be, when those two teachers in the room are anywhere from twenty to thirty, or larger?
It would be twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, with the benefit of being both teachers.
Both teachers.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that the activity, I think, I don't know if this is what you're asking, but I think the activity of looking to say, okay, what would it take if we wanted to have these guidelines? I also think, as a board, it would be good for us to reaffirm in the future, these are our guidelines, and these what these, these are what the guidelines mean. I think that's something that we should do as a district, as, as we move forward, and something we could certainly talk about, you know, next school year.
I, I would argue, since I've been on this board, we've been down this road a number of times, perhaps not in a formal voting sort of method, but I tell you, we have reviewed these guidelines over and over again, I mean, I've been on this board for ten years, and Chuck, like, great. It's not that we hadn't done it, we just haven't ratified them officially, so, I mean, we've talked about them, but, but anyway, I, I, can we, 'cause I'm hearing Lydia, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm hearing the level of intensity, that, that we as a board took away staff that caused all these numbers. So I want to be sure that we're all on the same page about what the staff reductions were last year, we're gonna see it in a slide a little bit later, I think, right? So just prior year, for my clarifications, right? Oh, sorry, it was up there earlier, sorry. No, I, with, if you want, if it doesn't interrupt, that's fine, but we had three sixth-grade teachers that we had an overall reduction, a special ed, a point four language, which was point two French, point two German, point two facts, and a point two gifted. So, I want to make sure we're not alarmist about this, and that this is not kind of a, kind of standard, what happens in the school is, classes ebb and flow, and what you need from us, I think you mentioned it at the beginning of your discussion there, that you may be, that we, those three teachers were something that we had done, and you'd be coming back to us as to whether you need them again or not?
Yes.
Okay, so when I look through these classes, and where the peaks are, which I think we need to address the peaks, we didn't eliminate a bunch of teachers at the middle school, Lydia.
Well, we did, Patty, 'cause what happened was, we took away three sixth-grade teachers, and if you see where the problems were this year, it was seventh grade, so some of those teachers, some of those three, needed to move up with that grade to seventh grade and cover some of those huge problem areas.
Yes, I, I understand that, but I'm just trying to get some, some clarity, and we already heard Esther tell us that she thinks that she's gonna be coming back to us for those numbers. So I just want to make sure we're not making drama, you've got this under control, I'm, I'm trusting you guys have this under control, and I can well imagine a master staff, a master schedule is not something you all take lightly, and are looking at those numbers. I, and I look forward to hearing your comments on it, once you get a chance to do your master scheduling, which is what you're doing at this time of year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I am interested, however, in, and this is probably more a high school question than the middle school question, but triggering off the middle school numbers, and looking at that, those German numbers in those, and in these, these language classes. So I'm interested to know whether we, as you guys are seeing, I'm interested to understand, and perhaps you can't answer it, but the high school can when they come up, how do you guys coordinate eighth grade coming into ninth grade, and the influence of the eighth grade participation, especially in something like, I could pick a language, 'cause it's easy, right? It's definable. So eighth grade's got fifty-eight kids in your German program, and you've got fifty-five in the, in the class in seventh grade, encouraging to me, but are we, does the high school know that that's kind of what the popularity is of, of a class like German? Again, I'm only using that as an example, 'cause it's tangible, and then how do they know to adjust or to make room for that kind of potential come in their way?
This is one of our larger meetings, Mr. Beckdahl and I will meet along with Mr. Stitzel to talk about staffing and the sharing, what our needs are, and then we work hand in hand collaboratively to see-
Okay.
-whether it's a point this, is it a greater need at the high school this year, or is it at the middle school? So we've done that the last few years, we knew that after tonight's meeting, that we were gonna sit down, we are going to sit down and look at what those needs are based on these numbers.
Okay, cool. And then conversely, and this is not necessarily master schedules, teacher-staff alignment, but this probably hearkens back to the discussion about the bell schedule, and kind of what we've done about the bell schedule, 'cause then, when I look at the music program, which we knew was a potential impact zone, when we changed the bell schedule in terms of the kids' ability to participate, and just the degree of drama that it created around their ability to, to participate, I'm, I'm a bit concerned that the music numbers actually are looking kind of low, and, and that the middle school has always been our field, you know, has always been the JV team going up to the high school to feed that depth of the music program that we have at the high school. I'm really not like, I'm looking at these numbers and going, has the bell schedule in fact had some negative ramifications? And maybe we can't answer that now, but that is something I would like us to, to contemplate, because I really do, I'm, I'm, it, it concerns me, right? We, we, we're known up and down the East Coast for our music program, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping it at that level, and that we're fielding the team coming out of seventh and eighth grade.
I feel like we are, just submitted that information to Dr. McQuiggan this afternoon, your exact question, where you talked about the ramifications regarding the bell schedule and the changes that were made, and we listed those in the key three areas, so you should be getting that information soon, we just submitted it this afternoon.
Thanks.
So I'd like to take a motion from the board-
May I ask a question?
Okay. To extend the work session, twenty minutes, please, before the formal board meeting starts.
Agreed.
Any objection?
Nope.
Thanks, sorry about that.
So, as I look at the PowerPoint, these, first of all, thank you to Tony for his presentation, thank you Esther, Ryan, everybody who's put this together. I think we all are well aware, it's a lot of work, it's a new formula, and it's really helping us to better understand the hard work that you do throughout the year to get ready for the students, so we thank you for that. I wanted to, as, as we look at the pages that speak to prior reductions of teaching staff, I think the reason why many of us wanted to see that is to better understand when we- when we ultimately make decisions on the budget, how the decisions we make end up, what the real-time ramifications are, and no one knows those better than the building principals and building administrators. So I think we've drawn some conclusions here based on numbers that have been provided to us, but I really hope that there, if there are other things, other than quantitative deductions that we're making on our own that you want to share with us, we really invite you to share those with us. It's important. This is, I think, why we ask these questions in the first place. And we've talked about, and I agree with what everyone said here about the concerns about how class size has grown seemingly in the middle school in core areas like language and English, but the, those are quantitative assessments. I'm also interested in qualitative assessments, something like when you take away one-point-oh in special education, what does that look like? What, for the, for the teaching experience, for the student experience? I mean, those are the kinds of things that I'm not sure come across in the numbers that we get. So if you can share with us sort of, what does that mean? Is it harder for the services to be delivered adequately? And same thing with the reduction of the gifted education. Like I said, that doesn't seem to be represented in terms of just the quantitative numbers. That's a qualitative thing as well, not that the other things aren't, but it's a qualitative thing. Is there anything that we should know about that going forward in terms of what the impact of those kinds of positions were this year?
I think we always look at the caseloads, the number of students that our special, special education teachers have to manage. One of the other advantages that we have, which I see it as a benefit, is that several of our special education teachers are also certified in the secondary areas of, for ELA, not just the elementary, so they can do sixth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, as well as for the mathematics. So they're certified, so we can do some adjusting. We do look at the numbers, and sometimes in special education classes, the numbers are smaller, but you have to consider the amount of need, meeting the needs of the students. So what we've done in some cases is overlap some classes, sixth and seventh grade, when, in our tense, our intensive class, intensive classes, where you can have, there's a smaller number, but you can combine sixth and seventh grade. You have to also look at the character of the students, as well as some of our life skills students. And just because there, that may be that impact of need, it doesn't mean that they still aren't capable of reading, say, maybe one grade level behind, or, or fifth or sixth grade if they're in seventh. We can also, we have also combined or merged some of our seventh and eighth grade classes, so, so that we can use that one teacher to combine grades. We haven't done sixth, seventh, and eighth, but we have combined some sixth and seventh and some seventh and eighth grade classes to accommodate the needs.
So if you had some experiences this year where you felt, based on the student population in these classes, and having to do a different kind of structuring of a class, you would let us know that that was problematic for you in terms of the quality of experience for students who, who have, whether it's on gifted, special ed, need certain kinds of services in order to get the appropriate education they need?
Yes.
And you, you don't feel that that's been a problem this year?
No, we're managing. We were able to manage this year, yes.
She's managing, but I think Mrs. Purnell has shared with us that she has concern about the special ed reduction that was made last year, and monitoring those individual students this coming year is something that you want to look at, and the impact that that's gonna play as we look at the actual caseloads. So she has voiced that, that, to administration, that that's one area that she would like us to monitor and look at more closely. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Make a comment. Thank you very much for the presentation. I hope that you've picked up what I've sensed from the board is that we're looking to make the balance to class sizes. I didn't see too many people, I didn't see anyone objecting to that. I'd also like to acknowledge the teachers that are in the classrooms that have the twenty-nine, that have the twenty-seven, and are putting that extra piece of work together to make sure that all of the students are successful. So as we move forward, it would be maybe a relief to some of the teaching staff that we're here focusing on trying to make the class size within the guidelines, that we're, we've done at the elementary school, and now we're looking at moving it into the middle school, 'cause that's what I'm hearing. And I think, I've been on the board for a little while, and when the administration comes back with a need, and it's a documented need, and it's there, and it's real, and it's for the students, that we're here to serve also. So I want you to remember that, and thank you for what you're doing, the teaching staff and everybody else. Thank you.
Okay, are we good then for middle school? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Esther, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Esther, thanks, Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Radnor High School Master Schedule Building begins early in the year with the construction of the Program of Studies. At this point in the year, recommendations have been entered by teachers, student electives have been selected, we've already previewed our preliminary numbers, and have met with Central Office Administration to, to review those. The Master Schedule Building for any high school is a giant jigsaw puzzle. We have over five-hundred-and-fifty sections that we create, and with a eight-period modified block schedule, it is certainly a challenge that we look forward to. Between now and the end of the year, we keep a close eye on changes to requests, to new-enrollees, and the goal is so we can make adjustments to our anticipated sections. When we look at our sections and how we build the master schedule, we take a couple of things into consideration. First, we look at our staffing. Second, we look at what our core requests are and elective requests are. We also take into consideration that we're meeting the needs of all the students, and we really look to keep within a fifteen-to-twenty-four class size there. The board has the current numbers, the public has the current numbers in front of them. I'm gonna go through and highlight these specifically where the reductions took place. You know, the vast majority of students at any given high school across the country get their first-choice requests. However, all high schools ask students to make second, third, fourth-choice requests because with eleven-hundred-and-ninety students, it is impossible to guarantee that every student's gonna get every class that they ask for. We do collaborate very closely, as Ms. Purnell said, between the Radnor High School and Radnor Middle School to share staff, and that allows us to be flexible and really make sure that we're meeting our students' needs. To the reductions that we had last year, we had a reduction in art, and we were able to manage and meet students' needs this year in art. In English, we also saw a reduction, we were able to manage, however, that's one area that we're closely monitoring. We are looking to reduce class sizes this year to using current staffing, and so that's one thing that we're keeping an eye on and that we have a goal to, to reduce those from what we currently have. Family consumer science, we were able to meet students' needs with family and consumer science, and the reduction was manageable. Chemistry is very much like English. We're keeping a close eye on the numbers this year. We've been in communication with Central Office regarding a possible need of a point-two, and that is attributed to an increase in students really seeking out STEM opportunities. We do have some new courses that have come in to encourage students to seek that out, and they've, it's been very popular with the students, so that's something that we're keeping an eye on. And then with our German, which was our last reduction, we were able to manage that this year, and that was using existing staff and sharing with the middle school. We have some teachers that are multi-certed, and being able to use them across both the high school and the middle school, or use them across different languages has been helpful.
Dan?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for this, and the detail of the spreadsheets, although the, although the font is small, the gratitude is large. I could have sworn that there, we reduced a math teacher for you as well last year. I, I feel like we definitely had that conversation about a math teacher. Where did, what happened to the math teacher?
So my recollection is that the board granted Central Office Administration the ability to put things back in.
Was that one of them that got put back in?
That was one of the things that I thank both Central Administration and the board for putting it back in, 'cause that was much needed.
Okay. So, so it was, it was a plan, and then at the very last minute, we gave you guys, you guys the freedom to kind of do exactly what you needed to do, and that seemed to help. Okay, so, you know, again, with an eye toward the, the class sizes, it's interesting that your paperwork says, I know we go for, you know, a guideline of fifteen to twenty-four. In fact, our, our actual guideline says a maximum of twenty-eight. And again, we still exceeded that in some areas this year. So was that, was that a room space constraint? Was that a teacher-staffing constraint? Was that a scheduling constraint? You know, what was the reason that we would be over twenty, even twenty-eight? I mean, never mind the guideline or the preferred number of twenty-four, and we're talking about some pretty, you know, some pretty important classes here. You know, AP English, what's the one that stuck out to me? Bio, Bioethics, there was one I saw it quite, quite, very quite high.
Sociology.
Yeah. So, so do you have a sense of, both for this year and even next year, where we get a sense that you might have some numbers creeping up and you're watching? Is it strictly staff? Is it classroom space? Is it schedules? What's the?
I, I think there's a little bit of everything, and it really depends on the department you're looking at and the, and the course you're looking at. There are certain courses that we really stick strictly at twenty-four, or some of them we stick at twenty-two. I can tell you that we are very close to twenty-two or twenty-three in our Project Lead the Way courses, because the computers that are required to run the CAD software, we have twenty-three in a classroom. So that's a constraint. When you look at a sewing class, we actually purchased more sewing machines to, to make that work. When you have a fax class, where they're doing cooking, or you have a lab class, we really try to stay at twenty-four as a firm cap for that. There are some classes that, that go over, we also have some classes that are under the fifteen. So it really depends on the class that's running, but we prioritize, the way that we build our master schedule is by building singletons first, and that's the common way that high school master schedules are built, so you, we build based on priority and based on singletons, then doubletons, then tripletons. So you will see some of the classes that are maybe higher or maybe lower, that could be a function of that they, there's fewer sections of those classes.
Okay, so the, the final question, I guess, ultimately what we learned from last year, in as much as we, you know, shaved back some positions, that the board ultimately gave the business depart, you know, the business office and the human resources and you, the flexibility to, boy, right down to the wire, if you absolutely needed a teacher, you put it back in, you put back in the math teacher, and, you know, I happily noticed that this year's numbers for math, you know, with some rare exception, are not pushing the limits. So you needed it, they're up there, but you needed it. Is that a tool that you found, that, that would be helpful for you moving forward this year, to continue to have maybe one or two flex positions? You know, we hold watch positions, and I think we think of them at elementary level, but perhaps we need to be thinking about some flex positions at the high school level, you know, to, to manage that. You know, is that a, is that something that you've considered? You, give it some thought, don't answer me. Give it some thought.
I will just, and I'll make sure I caught the whole question. There, Mr. Bechtel has shared, you know, where, and I think he started off in the presentation, where are some of those areas he's watching closely, where he might, may need some additional staff as part of, as the schedule gets developed and as we look at how the students fall out as you develop the schedule. So that is a piece that we are looking at. Did I miss the beginning part of your question?
So we did that last year to a certain extent as well, but at the end of the day, I think it came down to whatever, at some point over the summer, we had the intention of reducing a math teacher, and you got it back. So, you know, that, that, as long as he has the authority to say, you know, where he needs these teachers to be to meet his needs for the kids, you know, I get that you're identifying particular classes. Are you basing that on early schedule runs? Is that the deal?
That's correct. And one of the things, the students have until May twenty-sixth to change their mind.
Right.
So we, that's our preliminary numbers.
Okay. Kevin's a senior, so I'm not paying attention to schedules for next year, so. He maybe already did that. All right, yeah, that answers my question.
And I have not found Mr. Bechtel to be shy about sharing what they might need at the high school.
That's good, thank you.
For all of our administrators, I think they all take pride in their building and looking at what's best for their students, which I think is wonderful.
I want to jump right on that and just point out, from the data, that we did reduce one English teacher from the high school, and our AP English Language and Composition, which is three sections, was an average of twenty-seven-point-three students, and our AP English Lit and Composition, another four sections, was at twenty-eight students. So it's clear to me that these reductions, you know, have real impact to students every day, and I'm not happy to see that again in English, a core, core subject for our students. So my next comment, or actually, this is a question. When you say you're looking closely at a point-two chemistry teacher, tell me what that is gonna look like? 'Cause I'm interested in having people that are part of, you know, the science team that are a hundred percent invested in Radnor in all ways, so what's a point-two person? What's that gonna be?
We have a number of staff that are anywhere from point-two, point-three, up to a point-eight or a one-point-oh. So we, we run the gamut. You know, sometimes we go out and we have people that we find that are phenomenal, and sometimes we have somebody in-house that is phenomenal already, and they're a point-four, and they become a point-six. So we always, whenever we do hiring, we're looking for the absolute best people. If we have a need for a point-two, I'm gonna tell Mr. Bachelor and Mr. Stitzel, we absolutely need a point-two, and we're gonna get the best person and put them in front of kids.
Well, so do you think you can really get the best person, offering them like one day a week? Is that possible, to get a great teacher that wants to work one day a week? I don't know.
We work hard to get people here, and you know, people want to come to Radnor.
And I'll tell you, a lot of times, I'll just say in the past, for, in my history, but in two different districts, I mean, there are some people who are looking for part-time. I mean, there are. You can find, and you can find some really strong part-time educators, but as Mr. Bechtel said, it's something that, you know, you gotta, you gotta beat the bushes and really look for them, too, but sometimes they're right there waiting, looking for it as well.
So I guess this is just...
Subject area. The subject area plays a big role in that.
So I guess this is my opinion, but it would be my preference that we hire career people, you know, in full-time positions, and so point-two here, point-two there. I don't think builds the best, you know, cohesion in your teaching staff, that's just my opinion. So I would prefer not to go that way, you know.
Dan?
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I'll do it at the end, 'cause mine's more...
I just have one more question about chemistry. I'm just trying to understand what the problem is. It looks like your highest class number here is twenty-one students. Is this, why is chemistry a problem as compared to some of these others? You know, I made, I made it the same notations that Lydia did about English, and there are other places that look like they're potentially problematic. I don't understand that one.
So these are our, our numbers for this current school year.
Right.
As administrators, one of the things that we, we already have is, we have our first blush look at next year's numbers. One of the things that we, that the board passed in the Program of Studies was the College Board and Project Lead the Way pathway, and so we have a new biomedical engineering program that's in there, looking at that and looking at the other courses that we've got. We've had more students select science electives this year than we did in previous years. So our numbers do fluctuate from department to department, and looking at where our current certifications are right now, and what the student preliminary requests are for next year right now, we're looking at a possible point-two for next year.
So it's broader than just the chemistry classes, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So it's twenty after...
So, it's 20 after 7. Unless there's something pressing from the board, I'd like to wrap this workshop up. We'll go to the full board meeting. And any other questions we have, we can discuss then.
I guess I just want to make a clarification. So, our next meeting, we're going to be talking about budget. And ideally, we would not be talking about staff specifically. I think you said it earlier, but I just want to be clear. We're not talking about staff tonight because we have to vote on a budget and close a budget. We're looking at staff because we're trying to put tools in place that allow us as a district to figure out what our operating needs to be so that the budget can support it instead of the other way around. And I'll refrain from any further comments related to the budget till we get to the budget because they are interrelated and we are in a certain situation. But it would be desirable to completely separate them and have this discussion in October as we, you know, come back to kind of what happened, use that as our planning forward and not make it budget-specific.
We've talked about that and thank you for reiterating that, that to have this discussion outside the budget cycle, you know, or part of the beginning part of the budget cycle, I think will be much more beneficial. I really want to thank the administrative team and we can continue this discussion into the budget meeting tonight. We designed it that way if need be. So, I know some of them are going to stick around, but I want to thank the entire administrative team for all their work in putting together this. You know, it is important for us to be transparent with these numbers, not only with the board, but with our community. You know, as I do even a quick blush as we sit here and we look at the middle school and high school numbers. You know, if you take a quick calculation of total teachers for the middle school and total teachers for the high school, and we look at, you know, the total class sizes at the high school, we seem to be in better shape compared to the middle school. Yet, by one, we have a, we have a, we have a little bit more when I look at the ratio of, we probably have about 12 kids to one teacher at the middle school and we probably have about 13 kids to one teacher at the high school. Now, I'm including everyone. I'm including counselors. It's not a fair, but it isn't apples to apples as I do that blush. So, there's also pieces to our program we need to look at. There's pieces to our program and how we shape that program and what are those structures that exist that also have an impact. So, that's why it's good that this is a foundational discussion, to have this discussion as an opportunity for us to see what it is we have and how these numbers are derived. And again, I just really want to thank the administrative team for all that they have done because it's been a lot of work. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much to everyone that presented tonight, as well as all the administrators and staff that worked on putting the presentations together that weren't here to present. We appreciate all of that hard work. Incredibly informative. It allows us to digest it in a way that is very efficient for us. So, thank you all very much. So, we'll wrap that budget session up, that budget workshop, and we'll go into the formal board meeting. I'll call that to order. We'll start that with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to report that we met on April 4th and April 25th in executive session. In both of those sessions, we discussed legal matters and matters of personnel. We'll turn next to the highlight of the meeting here, our report from students.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So, as two members of the Student Council, we're very into the topic that is going to dominate most of what we're talking about here today, and that's the courtyard renovation. As the board knows, this project has been spearheaded by the Student Council and designs for the new courtyard have been done by high school civil engineering classes. This is a major project that will benefit students that pass for decades. The courtyard that's there now has been there for like 30 years without really changing at all. So, the one that we designed this year will last for those, for coming decades. Hopefully, not as long though. Student Council, with the help of Mrs. Pierceall, has planned many fundraisers to make sure the renovation will be the best it can possibly be. The one we need the most community help with and why I chose this podium to talk about is the Community Courtyard Dash. The run is a 5K and a one-mile fun run. And we're relying on a big turnout for the fun and help, the fun and helpful event. So, I sure expect everyone here to be there. All right, everyone. You guys too. The run is this Sunday, April 30th, at 8:45 for the fun run at Radnor High School. If you are interested, please go to runsignup.com and search for Community Courtyard Dash. So, I better see everyone jot this down. Runsignup.com, Community Courtyard Dash. If you cannot attend but would like to make a donation, if you go to the runsignup.com, go to Community Courtyard Dash, there is an option to make a donation. This is not the only way Student Council plans to have the community participate. We'll be looking for donations in the future and that'll be put on the district webpage and I'll talk about that in May. This is a project that the students have led and we want to see it be the best it can be. So, as a community, we really want everyone to get involved and everyone to help out because even if your kids are in kindergarten right now, this, it's going to be their courtyard too. It'll be mine for a year. It'll be hers for two years, but everyone past us, it'll be there for four years. And that's what makes it more important for us. So, thank you.
So, moving on to the topic of sports, the annual Katie Sampson Lacrosse Festival is this weekend and the girls and boys lacrosse teams will be playing a few games throughout the day. If you can, please come because the money raised goes to research and a number of treatment centers and programs for sports injuries. Next, the girls and boys crew team finished as the number one public school throughout the spring season and is moving on to championships. And in addition to that success, the softball team has been on a great track this season and won their most recent game against Springfield last week. And finally, the track team is headed off to Penn Relays this Thursday, so good luck to them. In conclusion, other highlights to wrap up this month include sophomore semi and student government elections for next year. Thank you for having us and have a great night.
Thank you guys very much. To the less exciting part of the meeting, our report from the superintendent.
That hurts, Mr. Falcone. And tonight, because we're talking about the budget, I'm willing to forego my report since we wanted to continue the budget discussion as needed.
I knew that.
Yes.
So, I knew that. Next, we'll look to public comment. Citizens are welcomed and encouraged to address the board during this period of the meeting, to comment on portions of the meeting on the agenda or other topics related to Radnor Township School District. We ask that you please print your name on the sign-in sheet in the back of the room on the table. And when you come to the podium, if you would please state your name, your street address and topic that you intend to address. Individual comment should be limited to not more than four minutes as per our current board policy. Should you be unable to attend the board meeting, submit your comment by email to boardquestions@rtst.org or in written form to Mr. Michael Petiti, Radnor Township School District, 135 South Wayne Avenue, Wayne, Pennsylvania, 19087. Public comment, please. Welcome, Debbie.
Hi, hi, everybody. Debbie Singer, 169 South Springville Road in Villanova. First, I want to thank Lydia for being so outspoken about class size. I want to thank Patty for being outspoken about music. These are two issues that are of great importance to me. I have been vocal about class size since my daughter was in kindergarten. She graduated last year. My personal feeling is that when you start raising class sizes, it's the kiss of death to a school district. For example, because of the work I do, I come in contact with a lot of music teachers. And yesterday I spoke to, just coincidentally, I spoke to the music teacher at Haverford School for Boys. Her daughter was at Agnes Irwin, switched to Baldwin. She would be an incoming sixth grader. And Annie was asking me about the middle school. Of course, I asked Maureen if she'd talk to her and I said, you know, any, you know, you could come and visit the school. But what I just heard tonight concerns me because I'd really be hard-pressed to, you know, encourage her daughter to come with these big class sizes. And the other thing was, on the same vein as that, is that when they say it's manageable, that they lost teachers, I don't know what that means. I was hoping to hear about the impact with regard to student growth. You may not have that data. I don't know when you will have it, but that's where we're really going to know how, what the impact is. So, I hope that you'll share that information with us when you get it. And thanks so much.
Thanks, Debbie. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. Judy Sherry, Governor, Circle Newtown Square. The budget work session agenda states that public comment will be available at 7:00 PM. And really, what it should state is public comment will not be available at 7:00 PM because there was no public comment. On December 20th, 2016, the board revised and adopted policy, I guess it's 6, 006, meeting in public participation. The stated purpose in this policy includes the following language. This policy is, quote, "intended to recognize the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of encouraging members of the public to participate in board meetings." Well, my original comments mentioned that tonight's work agenda, the work session, budget work session agenda eliminates public comment at the beginning of the meeting. I didn't really anticipate that it would eliminate public comment both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. And also, by the way, saying that the comment would occur at 7:00 PM was when the business meeting was scheduled. The search engine on the district's website reveals only one other budget work session agenda. This is the work session from January 7th, 2016, which includes public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting, of the work session. Mr. Falcone, the board's president, is responsible for this step backwards. As a lawyer, he has shown an eagerness in the past to find loopholes to eliminate public comment. For example, by incorrectly characterizing two separate policy meetings as one recessed meeting. Eliminating the public's opportunity to provide valuable input on a budget paid for by taxpayers is not following a policy that stresses the importance of encouraging members of the public to participate. My second topic is about the lack of a current and functional operational chart for the administration. Staffing is a topic that was covered in tonight's budget workshop, although I didn't really hear much discussion on the administration in terms of staffing. The board's policy 008, titled Organization Chart, was revised and adopted by the board way back on September 23rd, 2014. The policy states that the board shall establish an organizational chart for the district administrative staff that shall show lines of primary responsibility and will clarify relationships of one position to another. How does the board look at administrative staffing with a chart dated October 14th, 2014? That's the one that's online. As was pointed out previously, no one on this administrative chart reports to the Director of Secondary Education. That's this position here. No one reports to him. Although a Director of Operations is listed, there is no longer a Director of Operations. He left last summer with a huge retirement package of hundreds of thousands of dollars. What other listings are incorrect? The policy states that the board's responsibility is to approve changes to this chart. And once again, Mr. Falcone has dropped the ball. This is particularly irresponsible after hiring a new superintendent and expecting him to succeed with inaccurate information. The enrollment projections from the budget workshop give class size recommendations. And this is a topic that you covered pretty thoroughly during your meeting, from March 1990 and March 1991. And I agree with the discussion that class size recommendations were made over 25 years ago and they should be reviewed. And perhaps a ratio of teachers to students should also be considered. However, right now, grades six through eight in the middle school are recommended to have a class size no higher than 25 with an average of 22. And in the information provided, you can't tell if some class is what the actual class size is, but you can see the averages. So, in terms of core classes, which were mentioned at length, the seventh grade language arts class, the seventh grade CT language arts class, the seventh grade accelerated language arts, eighth grade language arts, eighth grade accelerated language arts, seventh grade social studies, seventh grade accelerated social studies, eighth grade social studies, sixth grade science, seventh grade accelerated science, eighth grade accelerated science, seventh grade math honors course, and the Algebra I seminar are the core classes that all exceed an average of 22, which is recommended. And then, what was mentioned also in terms of languages, the 29 for French, the 27.5 for German, 29 for Latin. Really, I was shocked when I read these numbers. And it was surprising to me really that you haven't heard more from parents related to this because they seem incredibly high, at least from this information. So, really, if I were to give you all a letter grade on this performance, and let's make it easy, pass, fail, you all would fail. So, the fact is that in this next agenda, which I'm now going to address just briefly, the information for the final budget seems like it's attached right onto a workshop. So, it makes you wonder, well, was the workshop supposed to change the numbers at all? Because it seems like the numbers are already written for a vote so that it's almost preordained and not as a result of discussion or meaningful discussion from the budget workshop. And when I took the numbers and divided it, the $96 million number, and divided it by 3,770 students, we are spending approximately, and I know it's kind of a broad way of looking at it, $25,627.40 per student. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Welcome, Roberta.
Good evening. Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road. It's very helpful to have the materials from the budget, the session previous to this budget meeting. And I think it's very helpful to have all those enrollment numbers. And someone, as someone who was involved with all those class size guidelines and drafting them decades ago, I realize how important they are. And I also realize, based on my experience, that over time, the needs of students have probably been magnified and increased greater than they were at the time those guidelines were installed. And I would also like to mention that I think the class size, particularly in those courses where writing is involved, needs to be considered closely because to encourage kids to write means you have to really do a lot of work with students. And it's important to assign work, read compositional work, and then provide meaningful feedback. And that does take more time than perhaps other subject matters. I would also like to encourage the board to consider the March Supreme Court ruling, which stated that school districts must give students with disabilities the chance to make meaningful, appropriate, ambitious progress in their work. And I think that if we are held accountable to those standards, that may also make a difference as you move forward in your budget considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. What's happening, Dave? Welcome.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight? It's been a long night so far, right? David Wood, President, Radnor Township Education Association. I just wanted to thank you for tonight's session. I think for the, from the board's standpoint, it seemed like you got a lot of information tonight that you hadn't had before. I saw the look of surprise and disappointment on some of your faces. And so, I think this is a good step in moving forward to be able to actually see the numbers that teachers are seeing day-to-day in the classroom. I know that in the past, in the past six months or so, you've been looking at teacher absences. And one of the things I would encourage you to look at, and to study maybe, is the impact of class size on teacher absences. Because I know as you look at your charts that you've been receiving, that teacher absences at the middle school are higher than the other buildings. Maybe that is an impact of your class size increases in certain areas and it's adding to teacher illness. That was just something that occurred to me as I looked at the class size numbers and reflected on where our numbers are the greatest in absences. And maybe that has an impact among other things. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is I think Julia may have asked the question about class size, are these the actual numbers? And I know one example is at Aethon, there are IU students that roll into classrooms and they're not counted on those numbers. So, there are classes that were, this year with the IU students included, at a class size of 27 or 28 at Aethon this year. And those are not included in the numbers moving forward. So, you'd have to look at where IU students, now I know they don't So, you'd have to look at where IU students, now, I know they don't go in for a full day, but it's still a student that would count, should count, towards that class size. Anyhow, just something to look at and think about. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy, welcome.
Good evening. Cindy Spurte, 106 Valley Forge Terrace, Wayne. I, too, would like to express my disappointment with not being able to make any public comment during the workshop. When the workshop was announced as being one hour prior to the board meeting, I felt that there was no way that we were ever going to make a one-hour deadline or one-hour timeframe to discuss staffing. And my understanding of a workshop, a lot of give and take, and there was a major presentation by the staff this evening, this late in the budget process. It's my understanding that tonight, and it's part of the agenda, that you will be voting on a preliminary budget, which means there isn't a lot of room for give and take prior to the decision in May. The numbers are pretty firm, at least it's my understanding. A couple, and sitting in the budget workshop, and it's going to be discussed a little bit further, my understanding in this meeting, the term co-teachers was brought up quite frequently in middle school, and we talked about staffing and looking at the number of students per classroom. Should we be looking at the number of students per teacher rather than number of students per classroom? And knowing, at least through the committee meetings that I've attended, the board meetings I've attended over the last year, there are four watch positions. Well, sitting here this last hour and almost an hour and a half, there are more positions than four that have been talked about and may appear to be needed. And where is that money coming from as we're voting on a budget this evening? I know it's a preliminary budget. So, that's part of my disappointment. The other, in understanding the presentation of the original budget, is the inclusion of the Act I numbers. And if I understand Ms. Deco correctly, that it's required that we include those, that 2.5% when the budget is presented, or it won't be included in the final, or won't be approved by the state or whatever in the final decision. That means that every year, for the foreseeable future, there's going to be an increase in the residents of Radnor Township taxes. We're starting out already ahead, and we're already adding. Another discussion that happened early on was that the extensions, the exemptions that we would go out for was just in case we needed them. And there is no way on God's green earth that anybody sitting up there in front of me thought that there wasn't any way we were going to need those. So, honest and open discussion with the public I would like to request also. Going through a few things, just a couple things on the minutes before you approve them, on my comments, just a few things that might make a little more clarity for people so they don't have to go back and look at the agenda. On item number 14, suggesting that the wording "has been and will be provided" is a very short, and what I meant, that is, if the event or the dollars have already been spent and we're at the end of a year, it doesn't make sense to make, to ask that the board vote that it will be approved or will be provided. And the other was item number 15, the minutes state that I said concerned about the purpose and objective of the form. Well, the form was the Black Student Union request, and my concern was the line as a safe space emotionally for the students, and I think that is very important, that that be included in the minutes. One other point in the public comment at the end of the meeting in the minutes, it shows that, it says, "David, Dave Wood, Maya Cave, and Rossum," with a comma in between, and that, to me, doesn't say that, as what happened, Dave came up and spoke for Maya. And I would like to make that, request that changed to the minutes. Another quick thing before getting to the agenda, as you know, there are several people in the public that prepare, take time and prepare for each one of these meetings so that we understand what you all are discussing. And we go to the website and pull up and print the agenda and the attachments. Well, there were attachments that were added yesterday. One very important was the PowerPoint on the final budget, and also the financial reports. And the term "last modified" is used for the three items, the two items that were added just yesterday, and the key is they weren't last modified, they were only added yesterday. And a few points on the agenda, I know the time is running short, but I would like to bring these up. Item number 13 is board recognition of student activities and clubs, and there's another request for a club, Minding Your Mind, which, with all the discussions that are going on these days with drug use, depression, et cetera, in the schools, this is an important club, and I don't know the individual because I'm not involved with the school district, but I would hope that the faculty sponsor is qualified to be the sponsor of this club to have some kind of a mental health or background, because that would be very important before this is approved. Again, I'm going to request item number 14 for board approval for student trips. I know that this is not going, this policy, we have been asking for, the public, many months, for a policy as to how decisions are made, and my understanding it's being now, it will be a decision made by the Finance Committee. But once again, I'm requesting that the Finance Committee put their heads together and come up with some sort of a decision as to how, what parameters there are, as to how decisions on which trips are financed and which trips are not. Also, I would like to thank, there's a policy number 004, Orientation Program for New Board Members. Two, two points on that. One is that the program shall be held within two months of appointment or election. I would hope that the program could be done in a shorter period of time than two months, knowing that the elections are in November and we're coming up to a holiday season, that the board members would be prepared to start off in January. And also, to thank you for adding the Sunshine Law to the list of sessions that will be covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Goldberg. I live at 317 West Loria Place, Bryn Mawr, and I'd like to address class size. My family moved to Radnor in 2005, and my four children have attended Ithan Elementary School for the past 11 years. Both my husband and I attended public schools, and we moved to Radnor area because we had heard how good the public schools are. Initially, the class sizes were 17 to 20 students per class. Radnor School District prided itself on smaller classes, especially at the elementary level, compared with other area school districts. Currently, my twin daughters are in fourth grade at Ithan, and their classes have 27 students each. This is detrimental to our students, as their teachers are overwhelmed and stressed, which is not conducive for a healthy learning environment. The students are not able to get the individual attention or differentiated teaching. They need to be effective learners. Data from studies over a period of years have pointed to a number of trends as a result of lowering class size. First, gains associated with small classes generally appear when the class size is reduced to less than 20 students. Second, gains associated with small classes are stronger for the early grades. I would like to see class size return to smaller classes, ideally 20 or fewer, for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move to reports from our board committees. Committee chairpersons may report on items pertinent to the agenda or of general importance to board business. Curriculum.
Curriculum, the curriculum committee met on April 18th. We actually had really only one major agenda item, and that was a review of Math &amp; Focus, which was provided by Dr. Murray. Let me encourage you to go back and review the video if you are interested. We are doing well with Math &amp; Focus. The report was very encouraging, and while there are a few tweaks that she and the teachers are following up on, this is thus far, looks to be a fine program that's been well received in doing its job. So, well done, Kelly. Thank you very much. And that's it for curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Michelson. Facilities.
Thank you. The facilities committee met on April 4th. There were three items on our agenda. Item number one was Drug Dogs at the High School. Item number two was the Radnor Way Parking. This was an after-school issue with the sports teams. And item number three was an update on the Radnor Trail. One of these items is on your agenda tonight, that is, the Drug Dogs. It is item number seven. I just want to make a comment about that, because it came at us rather quickly. I heard about it the Friday before the facilities meeting, that it was going to be on the agenda. I just want us to be extremely sensitive, that we let families know that we're going to do this, and that it's important to me that this is presented in a way that it's not like accusatory, that we think we've got a major problem, that we're going to catch somebody, because I don't think that's the case. I've had people ask me, is this really a huge problem in high school? I think it's really important that we position this, if we choose to do it, that this is a preventative measure to try to keep our high schoolers safe. I think that people were surprised that we're going to go, or some people were surprised that we're going to go to that measure, so I'm just putting that out there, that there was discussion of that. And our next meeting will be on May 2nd. Thank you.
Thanks, Lydia.
Can I, I just, I'm a little concerned about any editorial around that kind of stuff. Could I ask that we get an update directly from, from Mr. Bachelor in terms of why we're talking about the K-9 dogs, because we do have a problem? And, and so, albeit something that we want to make sure that we're, it's not accusational, but could we talk about that, please?
Okay.
Well, let's do that after our reports, please. Let's finish our reports.
I have a long explanation that was part of our meeting, if you didn't get a chance to see it, Patty, where Mr. Bachelor did specify that the principal of the high school, Dan Bechtel, is requesting this, and he outlined the measures that we already do.
I know, I know, but that's why I'd like him to do it again.
Mr. Bachelor will update the board at the end of our, if that's okay? Is that all right? Great, thanks. Finance.
Yeah, real short. We did budget, which you're going to hear about tonight, which includes capital, and we talked about our continued review of what's going on with substitute teachers, where we are, and whether there's anything the Finance Committee should be talking about doing. That's it.
Thank you. Policy. Ms. Stern.
Yes, the policy committee met April 4th. We have one policy on the agenda for first read tonight. It's policy 004, Orientation for New Board Members. This is a new policy. It's going to provide for an orientation program for new board members. The next policy committee meeting will meet Tuesday, May 2nd, at 5:00 PM, and in the Administration Building. Thanks.
Thank you. Government Relations and Communications. Mrs. Goldman.
Government Relations and Communications met on April 4th, and in our meeting, Michael Petiti, our Director of Communications, gave us an update on the status of the new district communications policy he is creating. At this point, our committee has signed off on the policy draft, and we are passing it on to the policy committee for their review at their May meeting. Michael is going to continue to work towards having the communication policy and its accompanying ARs in place for the start of the 2017-18 school year. The second agenda item was a follow-up to the presentation to our committee on March 20th by Adrian Irving, the Director of Legislative and Community Services for the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Adrian's presentation had prompted some questions from committee members about the impact on Radnor's education funding as a result of the active education tax credit legislation, and we also wanted to know how the joint session of the House and Senate Education Committees' hearing on ESSA had gone since it was taking place on the same day that Adrian was presenting to us. So, Adrian provided written follow-up on both of those, and we had a discussion about it. The third agenda item was a recap of the Wallingford-Swarthmore School District's Education Town Hall meeting with state legislators who represent that school district. They happen to be State Senators Killian and McGaragall, and House Representative Kruger Branicki. Chuck and I attended, along with three Radnor High School students, who were doing a ninth grade integrated project on education funding issues that could impact Radnor. The students found the forum to be very informative, and Chuck gave the committee a nice overview of what an interesting and interactive experience the town hall was. And that conversation led to our next two agenda items, where we discussed our committee's annual legislative events that we host here in Radnor. The federal legislative outreach meeting, which will be coming up in June, where we invite our federal representatives, Senators Toomey and Casey, to come to speak to our committee, and our fall state legislative breakfast. We discussed exploring the possibility of using the Wallingford-Swarthmore model for the state legislative breakfast, perhaps, going forward. That would mean that instead of having a breakfast, we might consider having a brief dinner with the legislators, board, and admin, the typical attendees, and then follow that with an education town hall that would be open to the community. So, we're going to be discussing this further at our next meeting. We also talked about next month's DCIU legislative breakfast, and I'm going to turn this over to Chuck, because he was checking into the date of that breakfast, because he'd like to encourage his colleagues to attend. And also, Chuck attended the Pennsylvania School Board Association's Advocacy Day in Harrisburg yesterday, and he wanted to talk a little bit about that.
I'll be brief. It's May 19th, the Legislative Council meeting. It's a breakfast. We would encourage all of the school board members to attend. It should be a good meeting. Also, there's a town meeting, a regional town meeting, May 4th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and that's up at, it's up in Plymouth, Plymouth meeting. It's a little closer than, than the last one was, so I would encourage you to come to that. Yesterday, I did have an opportunity to go up to Harrisburg, and we spoke with Senator Leach's staff. We spoke with the Chairman of Appropriations Committee, Saylor's staff. We spoke with Representative Vitale. I met with the staff from Senator McElhenney's. I think they put me in there because I'm Irish, but I'm not quite sure why, I'm not quite sure why that was. And we also talked with Representative Santora. It was a very positive day up there. We were received very, very well. The advantage that we have when we go up there as school board members is we're not all the same political party. So, we come up there as a mixed batch, and we're there for the education piece. The one thing that we are concerned about is the new bill that's up there. I think it's Bill 97, and we would encourage people to call their representatives. We're not in favor of that, PSBA. We think it's giving away too much power to the charter school appeals committee. So, if there was a charter that came to Radnor, we turned it down. It goes to the appeal to the state level, and the way they're trying to shift how that commission is made up is, in our opinion, in favor of the charter schools. So, we want that to be, to be looked at. So, we would encourage our, our people out there to contact their legislators and say we're opposed to that. That's about it for.
May, just add, the May 4th meeting, where did you say that was? Because that's a Pennsylvania School Board Association Town Hall. And where is that, Chuck? Is it at the high school?
No, no, that's, let's see, that's at Central Monco Technical School, 821 Plymouth Road, Plymouth meeting. So, I will get that information to you if anybody's interested. You do have to sign up for that. You have to go to the Members page on PSBA and sign up.
I also just wanted to mention that the next meeting is Tuesday, May 2nd, and it's a new time. That Government Relations typically meets at 4:00, and we are moved, the time for that meeting is being moved, starting in May, at this point, at 7:00 o'clock, and it'll still be in the same location, though.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Mr. Bachelor to have a quick discussion around the Drug Dogs.
No, and I think all the board members' comments are important comments, and it is something that the district has looked at as a deterrent. We're not looking to set this up as an "I gotcha." It is as much about a deterrent, but it is also based on feedback, feedback that we have received from students and from parents with concerns. We are, you know, there is no high school in this country, public or private, that is immune to the impact and the effects of, you know, unfortunately, of illegal drugs and alcohol. And we have found, from talking to other districts- And we have found from talking to other districts that having a drug dog and especially having it contracted with the organization we're looking to contract it as, it can stand as a deterrent. Some of the students who don't want to see this type of activity in their school, you know, have expressed that they would, they, they like to know that the district is taking a firm stand on that as well. Mr. Bechtold has done a really excellent job of sharing, right after the preliminary discussion with the school board and finance, excuse me, facilities. We then, Mr. Bechtold shared it with the community at the high school and has shared it with the students and has talked to them. He plans on setting up an assembly. And Mr. Bechtold, if I go wrong here, you know, jump in, but I set up an assembly to share with the students how that will work, an opportunity for them to actually meet this organization that provides, the InterQuest Detective K-9 will come as part of an assembly. They actually recommend as a company that there's no reason for the school to be on lockdown, that it's something that can just be part of the, the day. We are discussing whether or not, when we actually do it, we may actually hold kids in the classroom as it's done. But all the details to how this will proceed and how it works will be shared with the students in assembly. And I know has also been shared already through some communication with the parents and family. We have a wonderful high school. I've been so impressed with so many of the things I have seen at our high school. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we are sending a very clear message and our students, the vast majority of our students appreciate hearing that. I do respect though and understand those students who feel, you know, they don't want to have their individual liberties taken away and we are very aware of that as well. We're not, we are, we are very sensitive, you know, to student privacy and all of that as well. But we think it's very important that as a district, we draw a very clear line and we want to make sure that our students are making healthy choices and that those few that might choose to bring it into the school, that we're going to put measures in to try to prevent that from happening.
Thank you, Mr. Bachelor. Next, we'll go to our priority discussion action item, which is a financial item. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Booker.
Okay. So, at the finance committee meetings off and on, as you saw earlier in the presentation that Michelle put up, we had seen some updates on the budget each month. Right now, the budget that's before you, I guess we want to make some clarifications. Yes, we heard a lot of information this evening. Yes, there's more work that needs to be done on the budget. However, according to the rules and the guidelines provided by Act 1, we need to take a vote on a, on this proposed final budget. It will come back before this board. Edits can be made. We will discuss it further at our next finance committee meeting if there are other things we want to move around or do, consider. Just because we're doing this doesn't mean that we are precluded from making other changes. We certainly can't go up once we do this proposed final. I don't know if Michelle, if you can clarify that?
You actually can go up.
Okay.
It would not be my recommendation, but certainly once you release the millage rate, I don't think that your taxpayers are looking to have that rate be higher when they get their tax bill in July.
But that doesn't mean we can't go lower. So, in terms of the final number. So, did you want to go over, yeah, presentation?
Yes, I have a presentation prepared, so we'll go.
So, some of these things you probably have seen before. This presentation has a little bit more detail in it than the presentation from earlier because staffing was the most important thing we were dealing with at that meeting, as well as the schedule. So, the approach that administration took to this year's budget process was different than what we have done in the past. We did a, the proposed final budget contains a maintained budget, which as Mr. Bachelor explained earlier, maintains current programs that we have. It does not include any new initiatives. It does not include any capital improvements or maintenance. It does now include the potential use of fund balance. Originally, it did not, but currently it does. That's that $490,000 that we talked about earlier. The preliminary budget that was approved back on January 24th of 2017 had projected revenues of $95,000, projected expenditures of $96,000, or a shortfall of $1.5 million. That preliminary budget that was approved included a tax increase of .5731 mils or the maximum amount allowed by the Act 1 index. As I previously said, when we approve that preliminary budget, we have to show PDE that we have a need for exceptions. So, with the shortfall of 1.5, we were able to show that we did have a need. And so, we applied for those exceptions and were approved by PDE. Again, the summary of changes, you can see in February, we only had a few small changes that we were able to incorporate. So, we incorporated those in to try to continue to work on that shortfall. In March, we had some additional reductions or increases in revenue that we were able to make. Most notable, the Act 1 exceptions that were approved for special education and for retirement were incorporated into the proposed final. And then in April, we've included some additional reductions that we had. You can see we had a reduction for medical benefits. We received our second rate look and we also used a portion of our retirement escrow account. So, with all of those changes that we made since February, we now have what we call a balanced budget. So, that means that we are either meeting our expenditures through a use of increased revenues or using fund balance. But again, we don't have any new initiatives in this budget and there are no capital improvements. So, the proposed final budget includes a real estate increase of .7868 mils or 3.43%. So, what does that mean to the average homeowner? I have three slides that I have prepared and based on a low value, a median value, and a high assessed value, we can show you what the impact is. So, if, if your home has an assessed value of $274,000, you can see what the millage impact is here. So, this taxpayer would pay an additional $216 next year for their real estate taxes. If your home value is $472,000, which is the average home value in Radnor Township, you can see here that you would have an increase of $372,000, or $372. And if your home is assessed at $700,000, you can see that that tax increase would mean $562 more dollars for you. So, let's talk a little bit about the capital plan. We've been reviewing that at committee meetings, been looking at it at the finance committee meeting as well as facilities. Potential projects that have been identified total $1.8 million. There's cash on hand of $682,000, which would mean that we would need a transfer of $1.1 million if we wanted to complete all the projects that we have identified. One of the projects that we've identified that we're still looking at closely is the bleachers over at the high school. We have the bleacher report currently. We know that those bleachers with some minor repairs will be able to have additional useful life for several more years. So, we'll be talking about that in more detail at the facilities meeting coming up on May the 9th. We'd like to be able to utilize some time to try and get a better estimate for those bleachers, as well as explore options for the replacement. So, one of the things that we always like to look at is where the different revenue sources come from. You can see based on this pie chart that the bulk of our revenues are coming from local sources. So, what that means for, for Radnor is we get about 16% from the state, but 83% of the revenues that fund our programs here are coming from our local taxpayers or other local sources. So, some highlights, again, the millage increase is 3.43%, .7868 mils for a total millage rate of 23.713. We base the revenues on our local past history and we budgeted at 98.5% collection. State subsidies were based on the governor's budget, which was released in February. It includes all the changes that he talked about, especially that one that's notable, of course, is the reduction to our transportation subsidy. It continues the continuation of the state reimbursement at 50% for social security and retirement. Federal revenues were budgeted at 1617 levels. However, Dr. Barcheck just told me yesterday, I believe, that we are going to see a slight increase in Title I? Title I funding. So, we'll incorporate that in. That's revenue neutral, though, because what you get in an increase, you must spend. So, it really doesn't have any impact on the budget. When we look at this slide, this is our expenditures, God bless you, expenditures by object. Again, you can see from the pie chart, the biggest, our highest expenditures, salaries and benefits make up just under 70% of our budget. So, salaries, if we look just solely at salaries, they're expected to increase just under $1.6 million. And we budgeted our salaries based on currently approved collective bargaining agreements. So, if we had recent agreements that were approved, we've incorporated those increases into this budget. You can see in the area of benefit costs with that, those are increasing by 1.7. So, just those two items alone, more than utilize what revenues that we can generate from our Act 1 increase. We did get some information regarding our prescription coverage. We talked about that briefly at the finance committee last week. We did get information that our rate is going to be going down considerably, roughly $300,000 worth of a reduction that we have not yet incorporated into this proposed final budget. So, as we move forward, we'll be taking that reduction into consideration and making some recommendations regarding what to do with those funds. We talked about at the finance committee, Susan Michelson, I believe you asked me how much we had budgeted for prescription coverage. And I just wanted to make a correction to that. We budget, our budget contains $200,000, or 200, $2,559,468 for prescription coverage. Two million. The 6 million is what we have budgeted for our health care.
Is that one inside the other or is it 2 million, 2 million plus 6 million?
It's 2 million plus 6.
Yikes.
We're required to record those costs separate because they're self-funded. So, overall, when we look at the budget, our expenditures are increasing just under $3.4 million over what was budgeted for 2016-17. So, some of the things that we haven't talked about, we talked about the retirement escrow in finance, but we didn't talk about whether or not there was the desire to use some additional fund balance to have, to perhaps pay for new initiatives or capital projects. So, that is the bulk of the conversations that we'll have to be having as we move forward to final budget approval in May. This slide just shows what we would have available in the event that we wanted to make that consideration. So, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Michelle, for that. Two questions, though. Can you go back to the slide where it said the original millage and the, the amount it generated? Okay, so, no, that's the page, but it doesn't, this is not the page. We've seen it other places, but I can't.
Previously, we had looked at that in regards to.
My question really is, how much revenue does the point, does the index generate for us this year?
I happen to have it.
Perfect.
The Act 1 index will generate $1,777,471.
Okay. Okay, so, then if you scoot ahead to the CBA page, where just our, our collective bargaining agreements, just in salary alone, I mean, if nothing else had gone up just by virtue of our, of our current commitments, we barely, you know, index is barely enough to cover it.
Correct.
Okay. So, just, people need to understand that index is not, index is what we have to work with, but it's not really related to what, you know, what the real, what our real expenses end up going up by, you know, even just CBA alone. That was really the, that was one question I have for now. The.
Susan, may I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Because you're, it's interesting, I did those calculations today and I don't know if that would help you because I was thinking the same thing. And if we, our additional revenue through the 3.43% would be $2,455,471. And the increase that we have to, we're obligated to pay for salaries and benefits is $3,341,525. So, before anything else, we have a shortfall in meeting that obligation of $886,054. I think that's where you were headed, but I just wanted to give you those numbers if you wanted them.
Oh, appreciate it. No, I was just really looking at, at the index, index alone, but the question I had have is, has to do with, so we don't have year-end projections and that, tonight, which is fine. But I am curious on our, in our budget binder, you know, there are some pretty wide swings and we didn't get into that, but in the, in the places where the year-to-date revenue is off or the year-to-date expenditures are off, you know, soon will we have a conversation about where you think those numbers are going to end, you know, for the year, what you project them to be?
We will have that conversation at the May finance committee meeting.
Okay, May, great.
So, we'll do that in May. One of the things that you have to remember is we use a modified accrual basis, so we don't have all of our expenses in that we may know.
Sure.
Know about. So, we will continue to accrue those expenditures as we work through the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th. And we also have not made all of our necessary budgetary transfers.
Right.
When we get to this point in the year, sometimes we save those budgetary transfers and do them as part of the, the year-end closing, just because it makes it a lot easier for our building administrators and our department heads not to have to constantly be doing transfers.
But just, but a couple of highlight questions. Are you expecting our basic ed subsidy? You know, we budgeted 1.9 million and only 900,000s come in.
We get a big bulk of that in June.
Okay, so you are still expecting that. And then there was another big one. The 1.8 for Presbyterian Village in St. Edmunds. You budgeted 1.8, we've only had 895 come in. What do you think, when are you thinking that's coming in?
So, St. Edmunds, we bill that on a quarterly basis. So, I anticipate that those revenue dollars will come in. A lot of districts wait and pay that all at the end of the year. So, in September, we'll see a large amount of dollars come in for, for St. Edmunds and the village. And hopefully, some of the changes that we've made in terms of how we track those students and how we bill them back to their home districts, will start to pay off and we'll start to, oops, start to see that revenue come in more frequently and quicker. Because what I found when I first came here is that sometimes it was taking as long as two years for us to get our revenue dollars back. So, we've been working with the special ed department to make some changes and hopefully speed up the receipt of those dollars.
Okay. I have some comments, but I just wanted to get those couple of questions answered so you could sit. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Because I have a couple of things I wanted to go over. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Michelle, if you want to do the questions from there?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay?
I can do it from here.
No, I just, I, I'm just making sure that we're. No, I just, I'm just making sure that we're, a few things out of the budget binder. I did have a question about projections, so happy to hear that. Trying to reconcile a few other things in the budget binder, on the lead page of the revenue, on the current real estate taxes line, it shows 4.7%, whereas this proposal is 3.43. That includes the homestead stuff, right?
It does. The homestead will actually be backed out of that number, and it will be moved into the state revenue side as soon as PDE releases that dollar amount.
Okay. But otherwise, the net number here is the 3.43.
Correct.
On that line. So I had, and mind you, this might be a really stupid question, because it really should make total sense to me, but it doesn't for some reason. The revenue number of 96,121 versus the expenditure number, which in our binder, I'm assuming what's in this binder now reflects all the edits that we've made over the three months, right?
It does.
So the night, so if I look at revenue versus expenditures and, and look at the year-over, you know, the, the increase verse, in each of the years, revenue's increasing 4.345 million, expenditures is 4.345, expenditures is 3.3. So that looks like a surplus, how dare I use the word. Why is it that that's aligned like that?
So one of the things that you have to remember is what we're utilizing in revenue in the current fiscal year is substantially more to help us balance. So we're using fund balance, and we're using a larger portion of our retirement escrow fund, using a million two.
On the revenue side.
On the revenue side.
Mm-hmm.
So it kind of skews that number and makes it look as if our revenue is going up substantially, but it's, it's really only going up substantially because what is in 1617 does not include those two components that I just talked about. It doesn't include those uses.
It doesn't include the fund balance uses.
It doesn't include the fund balance uses.
So, so it would be helpful somewhere along the way, even if it's a notation at the bottom or a line that's kind of below the, below the, the chart, that explains that. Because when you look at it, you go, what? And we used to, you know, I mean, the pendulum has swung both ways, from one end to the other, in terms of, we put a line in that shows transfers or fund balance use, and then we took it out again, and then we put it back in and we take it out. So I just, if anybody just picks this budget up, you can't follow that bouncing ball. So it would be helpful, even if it's a note on the bottom or something at the bottom. Similarly, at the bottom of the expenditure sheet, where we have, and I guess really, it probably is the same, it's the same exact idea, but on, whether you put it on the revenue side or you put it on the expense side, there needs to be something that shows that it was, that the budget was balanced by using fund balance.
And I can add that.
Yeah, because it doesn't show that, right?
It does not.
Otherwise, if you do that comparison to this one, we have an unbalanced budget.
Absolutely. If you would look just at revenues versus expenditures, it would appear that it's unbalanced.
Yeah.
Which, if you use fund balance, it technically is unbalanced.
Ah.
Yes, it is.
Perfect. And then back to the, well, you don't have to go back to the slide, per se, but I just wanted to clarify that the increase in salaries that are on that line, taking into consideration the discussion that we had earlier this evening and the interest by many to increase staff in certain places to make sure our class sizes are what they are, that line item is not just CBA, that's our entire increase in salary across everything, taking into consideration CBA. So any new positions that were added or positions removed or whatever, that's the total salary number, not just the incremental because of some bargaining agreement.
Correct. The only thing that it does not include would be watch positions.
Perfect, which was on that miscellaneous line.
Right. That's, that's in a miscellaneous area, clearly identified as contingency for personnel.
But the reason I bring this up is because while it's healthy and I think important for this organization to have the operational discussion about what we think our staffing should be, separate from our budget, the hard-cold reality is every one of those new positions, if we want to add new positions, we're already, this budget considers taxing our community the maximum we can via exceptions and Act I. So we don't really have headroom to even tax anymore to hire more people or to have a higher salary bucket. We've already used all that up. And so if this board wants to give, and the reason we're here, the reason we did those cuts last year was exactly for that reason. We had already maxed out the taxing that we could do to our community, and I guess to some degree, and people have brought it up, the hard-cold reality is, we're going to be in a position of having to cause Act I as a minimum and likely exceptions for the, for the foregoing future at this point in time, given where we are. So I wholeheartedly appreciate the idea that we're going to be looking at things more operationally. Why are we doing things, not because of the money, but because what's right, and then rightsizing our district for what works for our children, and then funding towards it. But I just, it's, it's, it's interesting to me that there's, you know, this board, comments earlier this evening, that this board's at fault because we eliminated some teaching staff last year. No, we, we had to do something. The dollars don't exist. And we can continue to take out of fund balance, we are going to have to in certain places, we already knew we were going to. The PESR stuff is not what I'm talking about. That was there on purpose. We did that as, as an intentional burn-down to get used to the new PESR's rate. But I just, you can't, as much as you need to look at the operational of the district and say, what's best for the district, we only have so much runway. And so we need to maybe look at some programs. If we don't need them, we don't need them. If we want to have more teachers here or more staff there for the core subjects, which I wholeheartedly support, then maybe we need to look elsewhere of where we're going to find the funds to pay for that, because the community's already being taxed all the way to the max. And I know that we all said that we're not going to take the exceptions, and I think that was brought up earlier today, but I think we all realize, where is it going to come from? So unless there are some hard discussions about program changes or referendum, okay, we can go either way. But you can't have your cake and eat it too. It's, and this is, I'm sorry, you're standing there. I know you know this very well. But I mean, I just want to be sure that as we, we get all impassioned about the things that as individuals we're most interested in the district, it's a balancing act. And this budget actually really points it out pretty clearly, in my opinion. So, back to kind of what we're here for tonight, this is the proposed final budget. It needs a whole lot more work. There's more discussion to be had around maybe some of the staffing stuff we heard tonight, maybe some other topics, and then looking at the capital and kind of what we have to do, which is another place, this budget doesn't even include that, so we already are saying money may have to come from somewhere else, unless we have a surplus, unless we have funds left over this year not spent because perhaps we didn't fill a position or something like that, that will help us to fund the capital, which I'm expecting to see something of in the projection.
And that's one of the things that we've been talking about as administrators, is some ways that we can help pay for the capital, at least for this 16, or I'm sorry, 1718 budget year. It will help us get through the hump, and we'll be presenting more on that at the May 9th meeting.
Yeah, that's good. Great. Thank you.
I guess I have a comment. So I agree with what, a lot of what Ms. Booker said, that she points out some salient features here. I have to point out, though, that one of the reasons that things look the way they do does have a historical basis here, and it has to do with this board in the past not going to index. And I think the index was set up by the state to follow the inflation rate, and I think that school districts were expected to consider going to the index as a rational, consistent, steady funding source. And this board, this goes back, has not consistently agreed on that as a method of moving forward. So you see us at this point in time, and what you're saying is correct at this point in time, but there is a history on why this looks the way it does. And I know this is going to engender more comments.
Sure it is.
But that, but that's true. And you were accusing me of editorializing earlier. I think you just did a long editorial that just some of it's true and all of it's true, but there's more to the story.
So what's more to the story? We had, we had serial years of significant surpluses, correct? We also, in the years in which we had 0% tax increases, we ratcheted up spending far away and away above where we should have. Okay? The participation in this situation is not just driven by revenue, but in, frankly, from my perspective, it was driven far more by absolutely feckless spending, because there was no willingness on the part of many on this board to take a look at what we were proposing was going to cost, despite repeated requests by myself and Ms. Booker, among others, who said, this is unsustainable. We are going to hit a wall. We can't afford this over time. And so we've hit the wall, here we are. And you can go back and review the record. Go back and review the record.
Yes, but part of why we hit the wall is because we chose not to go to index for a number of years. So I just.
And I voted against that.
Okay.
Both times, just saying. So you're right, you're right, you're right, Lydia. There's, there's a lot of reasons why we are where we are. There's never, you know, just a one-liner. But we are in this situation. And we're, you know, I'm really looking forward to looking at the operation of the district in a different way, separate from money, but just what do we need and what does it need to be? And I'm thankful for the earlier discussion this evening to get us off on that track. I look forward to hearing more about the programmatic understandings and studies and works that, that we're going to get from our administration, and appreciate the fact that this is not something our community, members of our community, not all members of our community, but members of our community are going to struggle with this, second year in a row of this maximum tax increase. So I'm, I'm just respectful of trying to understand where everybody sits on this out in the community and, and how it impacts people, as I'm sure all of you are as well.
Well, I think that's fair. We all do. And I, I was really encouraged by hearing you say something, which is that we're going to move forward, looking at what we need programmatically.
Yep.
And that's.
I think it's, it's what we need programmatically, and how can we deliver certain services that we currently deliver differently? I mean, that's one of the things that I think in, not just our district, but I think public education in general, doesn't necessarily hit the forefront in terms of how we might do some things differently, just because we can, because we're now in, you know, well into the 21st century, and there are other ways to do certain tasks that we are still doing, as if we were looking at the world as they did in 1920 or 1930, you know, or decades before. So I look forward to taking the opportunity, as we move forward with this, to be creative in ways in which we can deliver services differently and preserve everything that's good about what Radnor offers its children. And mine have prospered tremendously from the education they got here, and that is important to keep in place for Dave's kids and all the kids still coming forward through.
So I guess unless, yeah, go ahead.
I just have an interesting, a couple of interesting facts here, because we're not alone in this in Pennsylvania, the different school districts. Across, across the state of Pennsylvania, according to PSBA, since the 2010, 2011, staffing has decreased 4.3%, the cost of staffing. So the school districts have done a really good job with the monies that they've been able to spend. The pension has increased 257%. And that's one of the things that we have, that we're dealing with, is the fact that so much of the money that is going towards, towards the pension situation, that we're looking at the state to try to fix. I just throw that out there because it's something that our state legislators need to realize. That has to be fixed, and that's what's costing districts an enormous amount of, of money. And the frustration level is very high across the entire state of Pennsylvania. And we are in a very good position here compared to many other districts, and just the fact that we're talking about a curriculum-driven budget is, is something that we can be proud of.
Well, and I think all of us on this board had the foresight, part of the reason we had the fund balance was to cover those PESR's expenditures that we knew were going to be large increases the last few years. So I think it was credit to the administration as well that we had prudent budgeting to handle those big increases of 30%.
So are there any other questions for Michelle on this topic?
Oh, Michelle, no.
Yeah. So why don't you go ahead and sit down?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks, Michelle.
How about some board, any more board discussion? Yeah, I was going to make a motion. Okay. Right, we have to do that. Yep. Okay, so it, and I'm, I make this motion with a little bit of, I don't know what the right word is. I don't want to say heavy heart, but I do. That the board, that the board adopted 201718 proposed final general budget in the amount of $96,615,289. $96,615,289, representing the final real estate tax increase of .7868.
76.
Seven, no, it's changed, 7868 mills, or 3.4275% over the 201617 budget.
So I'll move. Your second.
Is there a second? Yeah, Mike seconded. Mike seconded. I made the motion. All in favor?
Are we going to have any more discussion? Because I just have, I just really, it's not really a long discussion, it's not going to be a long thing. When we voted for the budget last year and we did make the reductions that we made, you know, I asked last year about, I want to, going to want to hear about the impacts of the, the changes. I've been asking for that in finance since January, so I really appreciate the information that we got tonight. But some of it, you know, my sneaking suspicion, and then the anecdotal stuff about class size, has, has borne out in the information tonight. And I'm really sorry that it's April, but that's, you know, I have been asking for this for a while. So my only question is, in what fashion will we have a conversation about, you know, what to do if we need more teachers to deal with the, some of the class size issues? Because the maintenance budget doesn't address that. So what's the plan for that conversation? And if you tell me finance, Patty, that's fine, we can talk about it in finance, I just want to know what the plan is before I vote on this tonight.
Yeah, it was my understanding that based on the input and the work that they've done, and for clarity, I know we've all been asking for the staffing feedback, but I do believe very on, early in the beginning, we said, and even when Dr. Costello was here, that we wanted to wait until the middle school and the high school got to see their first pass through next year's planning before we would get to see that. So, so that was why we got it tonight. So it's my expectation that we will have follow-up from administration at the next Finance Committee meeting, as you all churn through these, this information as well, and that you'll be making some proposal for us to discuss at finance, and then we'll move it forward to the board. That's my expectation.
Is, is that's the plan then? So because.
I would.
I mean, that's what I'm, yeah.
Get confirmation, but that was my expectation.
Yes, yeah, we can continue to have that discussion, and we can continue to have that discussion in finance. We do have, you know, those watch positions that are in there, and we can have that discussion as well. And I think some of this discussion might also lend itself to what are those district goals we want to establish for next year? Maybe some of these are areas that we want to look at so that we're not at this place that we're discussing here, right, you know, as we're looking at the budget, these impacts. So what are some of those larger district goals we might want to set, which we can discuss over the next two months as well?
Yeah, I think there's also, when we see the projections, we'll see that there's a couple of positions, not a, not a lot, but there's a couple of positions we hadn't filled this year that are in the budget. So we may find that that's able to be used, moved over to teachers or something in the next, in this next budget. So we'll see.
Also, let's not forget the 300,000 from prescriptions. That benefit is not yet in these numbers. So there is, I, I think it's important to get as much of the additional information together before we, before we decide.
Yeah, for the next session.
That, that's fair. I just, you know, don't want anybody to be surprised, you know, if this stuff, if the. the teacher piece doesn't get, the class size issue doesn't get addressed. You know, now I waited to hear what the impact was, and here it is. And I appreciate how hard all the, you know, principals say we're going to work and we manage. You know, class size is class size. So, but that's fine. So finance committee is the place. Great, thank you.
At least for the next round.
Thank you.
Well, any other discussion from the board before we call a vote? Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I don't think any of us up here relish raising our own taxes or raising taxes on our friends that we're going to see this weekend and say, "Why did you do that?" I mean, I have a friend that pays almost $39,000 a year in property taxes, you know, so almost 4% is going to hit him a little more than it's going to hit me. But it, I have to express my gratitude to Michelle and all the administrators for all the hard work that they've done because this is the second budget that I'm voting on, I believe. And we've almost had two or three different budget processes since I've been on the board because, you know, we had a budget process that was in place with one super, and then he left, and then we had an interim super who kind of fixed it, but, you know, left it to the new super to do the budget process as he chose because, you know, it would be, turned out to be Ken. So it would, you know, we want to do a process that Ken wants to run. So we've kind of had almost two maintenance budgets here, but as everybody said, you know, if you want more teachers to reduce class size, but, you know, we have these mandatory expenditure increases based on the collective bargaining agreements that we've already signed, where are you going to get the money from? You know, the days of raising the budget, 8% a year, 7%, 5%, 4%, whatever we need, it's over, you know, with Act One. So it's going to come from one end or the other. And that's what we got to start looking at the day after this budget is passed in May. You know, take Wednesday off, and then Thursday, we got to start looking at this stuff from the bottom up again.
Yeah. So we'll vote. All in favor of the recommendation as read by Mrs. Booker? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine zero. Item number two is the request to approve Delaware County Community College 2017-2018 budget.
So I move.
Well, I have a blurb to tell you about it. The 2017-18 Delaware County Community Budget was approved by the college's Board of Trustees on March 15th and is presented for consideration and approval by the Radnor Township School Board of Directors in the amount of $92,000, $91,619, of which, now that's their total budget. Radnor's share is based on the market valuation formula and is $1,427,616, which is an increase of $3,645 over the 2016-2017 budget. And I want to give you just some context for that from our liaison meeting. So the Delaware County Community College Liaison Committee met on March 29th. It was Dr. Jerry Parker's last meeting as president. And the salient features of this budget that I want you to be aware of is that it is a 1% increase overall for their entire budget. And it includes a 4.8% increase in student tuition. So students are bearing the vast brunt of the budget increase, not the districts. Student tuition now makes up 55% of the budget. Radnor's share, which I already read to you, is only up 4,000 some odd dollars from last And the rest of this I'll cover in my report about the community college.
Lydia, do you want to read the recommendation?
I did already.
You read the intro, right?
Yeah, I already read it. Okay, the recommendation, sorry. That the board approve and adopt the budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year 2017-2018 in the form and amounts prescribed totaling $92,000, $91,619, with Radnor's share being, again, $1,427,616. And direct the proper officers to submit the name, the same for approval, to the Department of Education of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This will be a roll call vote.
Michelle, will you call the vote, please?
Mr. Falcone.
Second.
Do you want me to second it?
Oh, right. Second.
Seconded it.
Mr. Falcone.
Aye.
Mrs. Michelson.
Aye.
Mrs. Bonnberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Booker.
Yeah.
Mrs. Goldman.
Aye.
Mr. Madden.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Yes.
Ms. Stern.
Aye.
Motion carries, nine oh.
Thank you. Our third item will be the election of trustee reappointment for Delaware County Community College.
The three names up for reelection for the Delaware County Community College trustees are Stephen Gambisio, David Grossman, and Marilyn Spicer. They are all currently serving on the board, and they're asking to seek reappointment to a new six-year term. Their terms expire June 30th, 2017, so the new terms will be effective July 1st, 2017. We discussed this at the liaison committee meeting, and it is the recommendation of the Delaware County Community Administration, as well as the liaison committee, that these three members be reappointed to the board.
Do you want to read the recommendation as written?
Okay, the recommendation, that the board vote and reappoint Stephen Gambisia, Gambisia, thank you, David Grossman, and Marilyn Spicer as trustees to the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees effective July 1st, 2017. This is also a roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Michelle, will you call the vote, please?
Mr. Falcone.
Aye.
Mrs. Michelson.
Aye.
Mrs. Bonnberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Booker.
Yeah.
Mrs. Goldman.
Aye.
Mr. Madden.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Yes.
Ms. Stern.
Aye.
Motion carries, nine oh.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll next move to the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. With the consent of all members, they are therefore grouped, and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, the board president will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull from consent this evening?
I wanted to pull 15.
15.
I'll pull four.
Four and 15.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items five through 14, and 16, and item 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Nine zero. Any opposed? Seeing none, nine zero. Number four, Chuck.
Yes, I'd like to amend the minutes to include the comments that Cindy, Ms. Spurte, requested. I felt that the, they were very important, some of the things that were left out, especially the one about the new clubs and the purpose of them. I think it's important that that put back in.
Yeah, I'll second that.
May I add something? I don't know if it should come as an amendment to this or if it's for later business, but last month, we voted on a service provider of CCRES to provide educational services to the district. Wasn't a lot of money, not to exceed $18,000. I think people should know that this company, CCRES, is run by our former superintendent, Michael Kelly. I don't think anything untoward happened. I don't think that any process wasn't followed. I think everything's fine. It's just that in the interest of transparency, I'd like it to be noted that it's his, the company he now is in charge of.
So, Michelle, on that, would we make a note in the minutes for this meeting?
Well, is that... I'm going to defer to Mike.
Good call. Yeah, it would probably be best at the end of the meeting, is there the board comment section, to provide that as a comment, and it can be reflected in the minutes under board comment that that was made versus trying to amend last month's meetings to include that, since it didn't actually come up in last month's meeting.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion by Chuck. I seconded. All in favor of adopting Ms. Spurte's comments to the minutes?
I'm sorry to be nitpicky, but what exactly, do we need to say what exactly we're going to put in the meeting? Or just whatever she said? Or what, I'm sorry to be nitpicky, but what are we, do we need to stipulate?
Ms. Spurte, do you have, exactly what you said?
She made a comment that we should reference, that Dave Wood was speaking on behalf of Maya K. Van Rossum.
And then also something for the club.
And something clarifying her comments about the club.
Her comments about the club.
It was specific language that was not in the minutes.
About providing a safe space or something.
Providing a safe space.
Is that the gist of it, Cindy?
So we'll make an amendment to those two sections of the minutes to reflect the comments from Ms. Spurte, and the board will be voting on those minutes as amended with those additions. Any other comment on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You spoke too quick. I appreciate a clarification of the public comment. I'm going to vote against this. I think it is a dangerous path to be amending our minutes to be more specific about what people said. Minutes are supposed to reflect board action. And public comment, this was the very conversation we had when we had the policy discussion about, at Policy, about meeting 006, about what are minutes supposed to be? And, you know, you all can vote for this, but I'm just saying it's a dangerous path to be going down every month where we have to amend our minutes because somebody in the public, you know, feels that not enough of the gist of what they said during public comment was conveyed. It's a dangerous path. I'm just sharing that concern. The clarification about, you know, Mr. Wood speaking on behalf of Ms. Rossum, Van Rossum, I think that is a very well-taken point.
Well, I'll just comment that we often hear requests to amend our minutes, and it's seldom done. I think tonight is an exception, that Chuck thinks is relevant. I agree with him on that specific instance, but your point is well noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is, I'm sorry, Susan, so you voted in favor?
I said I would vote for it, but I'm saying, I'm raising it as a concern, and it's a concern to me. I think it's a dangerous path. I think her point is well taken about Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you. So it's eight one. Next would be number, I think it was 14, 15. Yes.
15. So this policy came about, I believe Amy brought it to our attention, Laura Marion has a similar policy, and it was sort of modeled on that. And it's a great practice. We should have orientation when you start a board. I appreciated mine, and I hope it continues every two years. The question I have is, I really saw this as a best practice. And so my question is, how many best practices should we convert into a formal policy? Because we can do that all day long, and it's not like the policy committee doesn't have enough work to do. For example, I think it's a best practice to review our class sizes every year and our programming. Should we make that a policy? I think it's just as worthy as doing orientation. I love this practice that we've done this month of, you know, Michelle showing our budget to do a maintenance budget. I think it's a great idea. It shows a lot. Is that a best practice or is that a policy? I could go on and on with wonderful things that have happened just today that are best practices that sure we could consider as policies. So my question is, where do we draw the line if we make this a policy when I really see it as a best practice?
Great point. I hadn't really thought about it in that way, but I, you know, it's here, I don't particularly object to policing it if that's what we want to do, but I do think your point, whether we pass or don't pass this, I think your point is well taken and ought to be considered as other things like this come up down the road, if not this one.
Do you want me to take it? No, you, go ahead.
I was just going to offer a comment. I think we talked about this a little bit at the meeting. If you remember, Julia, it was, there were some requests to amend it, to make it more specific, and we backed off of those requests for that very reason, that we were going kind of beyond what was a best practice and getting into kind of more specifics that I felt went beyond what we should be doing as a board and policy. I think this landed at a comfortable spot for me that didn't go beyond that, though I think your warning is well made. I think we have to be mindful of these types of things. And I think, again, where we ended on this specific policy, to me, heeded your warning at the policy committee meeting and kept it away from what really is a best practice. I think specifically was, we should require all board members to attend, along with the superintendent and other folks. And we backed off of that position and said it would just be new members, and then if leadership wanted to attend, they could, and anybody else for that matter. So that's my thought on it.
So what if a new board member doesn't want to participate?
And we actually talked about that too, Patty.
I mean, it's a policy.
Yeah, we went away, we went away from that because I raised that issue at the policy meeting. It can't be mandatory. It's a suggestion. Now, we had talked about, Julia, if you remember, there was a discussion about what was mandatory, and I said, "What if they can't schedule it? What if it just doesn't work for them? You can't hold them up, and they can't immediately be in violation of a board policy simply because their schedule didn't work." That was a discussion we had at the committee, isn't that?
No, I was just going to say, that's the reason that we struck in the last sentence, all new board members are expected to participate. We said should endeavor for that very reason, Patty. But, and to answer Julia's, you know, or to comment on Julia's, you know, posing of this, because she and I did have this conversation at the chair, vice-chair level, you know, I was not overly offended by this policy. In fact, I'm not at all offended. I think that it's, it was, I found the orientation program to be very helpful. Dave and I did it together. And, you know, it's one of those, but I, but I think that her point was well taken, and she and I both talked about, you know, if it feels like all of a sudden we're coming up with new policy after new policy after new policy, absent those required by law, because, by the way, we are quite busy with those required by state law, you know, that is not a practice that we want to continue. But I thought that this was pretty, I thought that this was a pretty comfortable way to codify some of the work that I feel like our board has worked really hard to do in the last year, particularly since Julia and Amy and Mike came on the board, and some of the board work that we've done, which is to try to have a common understanding of our role on the board and, you know, in partnership particularly with our new superintendent, to, you know, have us be the best board we can be. And this particular policy felt really consistent with that.
Any other discussion from the board on this?
Julia, do you want to move it? Or you pulled it in yes, no?
Similar to the last line that we discussed, I'm wary of precedent. This doesn't offend me. I think it's a great idea. I would like, as a committee, to maybe talk about our own guidelines for structuring what's the best practice and what's policy-worthy. So I fully support this, but with caution.
Do you want to move it? And I'll second.
Sure.
Great.
I move to, I don't know the language. What am I...
So I move that we, that we...
I move that we pass the orientation program for new members, policy 004, for adoption.
For first reading.
For first reading. I beg your pardon.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? There are none? Nine zero. That takes care of our consent agenda. Now we move to reports from our board liaisons. Representatives are asked to report on items pertinent to school district business. Delaware County Community College.
Can you come back to that? I got to find my note.
Sure. Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Nothing there. Nothing new.
Federal Relations Network.
No report.
IU Legislative Council, Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
No report.
Parks and Recreation.
Yes, we, our last meeting included an extensive review of the proposed trail, Radnor Trail extension between Radnor, its current stopping point along Radnor Chester Road, that point across Radnor Chester, and up to the Blue Root, what do you call them? Wall? Anyway, there was a...
Sound barrier.
The sound barrier, right. The, the gist of it, there was a lot to be said about it. It included discussions around parking, around proposed culvert for moving under Radnor Chester Road, and then other discussions about the nature of the trail and so on and so forth. It was interesting. I would encourage all families in the, in our district, in Radnor, to stay on top of this. It was informative and there will be more to discuss.
Thank you. Delaware County Community College.
Looping back, I just have a brief statement on what else was discussed at the liaison committee. We received a report on the state budget and how it'll impact community colleges, the community college enrollment, the dual enrollment program, and distance education. So if anyone's interested in those, please contact me and I can give you details.
Thank you. PTO Coordinating Council.
The PTO Coordinating Council met last night, and some of the topics covered were a social media discussion. The PTO presidents wanted to know more about some of the social media curriculum in the district. So Sue Dahlstrom, the West Librarian, and Catherine Haran, the Radnor Middle School Librarian, came and discussed, gave a really interesting overview of the digital citizenship curriculum in grades K through 12. They even cover the high school. And the second item that was discussed was an update on the Radnor PTO Homework Club Grant. The letter of intent for these clubs was submitted to the Radnor Educational Foundation and approved to move forward for a full grant. So the grant is requesting $6,000 per elementary school that will be given to the PTOs to start a homework club in the next school year. Then there was, Dr. McWiggin mentioned this speaker who's coming on August 30th to speak to staff, George Coros, and his book Innovator's Mindset is something that the staff members and administrators are reading in preparation for that. And extra copies, yes, I have one too. The, the books were, there were some extra copies, and Dr. McWiggin gave them out to the PTO presidents to read. And then the final agenda item was a discussion about renaming the PTO, PTSA Coordinating Council to better reflect what...